Good evening, everyone. There are a number of empty seats in the front few rows. There are a number of empty seats within the rows. If people would move to one side or the other to fill in those gaps. We still have a number of people trying to get in here. And we want to have all the seats filled as much as possible. We're going to give it a couple of minutes because we have such long lines coming in. But please know we're going to get started in just a couple of minutes.
Selectman Copeland, good to see you in the front row. First lady?
I am the front row senator.
That's great. You're the one who asked for homework, usually. I know your type. My wife is that way.
His security detail's here, so we're good.
Yeah, you need the airpiece set. Eagle one is landing.
I hire him all the time to help me with stuff in the tech shop. He's just a great kid. We've had him for a while. He's a high function man. If you talk to him for a while, he can answer questions. We did, yes. And it's been about victory and Lisa. And how many chairs are in there? The guy has been over there. It's very, very great, but long story short, he was a saver. He really loves to laugh. He wants to hold our chefs. He's tall, he's laid, he's bald, he's cold. He lives in the city, he's a celebrationist. But after having lived in the city, and he was going to be alive, he was moving all the kids in. About 15 years old, probably 10 years old. His name is Colorado Sweeney. And he was a tour guide. He had a nice dog, he got black hair. So I said, all right, well, I said, we've got the assets. I said, let's see, they should take him. And she's like, no, no, please bring him back to us. Mine is the black hair. Didn't work out. Yeah, it's great. And she is hoping to come out a little bit more. She's doing well, yeah, she is, yeah. She's glad. That'll lead to a witness to her.
There are still seats in the front row. Anybody who needs a seat, long enough to the front row.
I mean, she's still there, but not with like regular surgery. Yeah, so I don't know if I'll super home living. They grew. We're going back again next week. They want to give her another seat this year to see the brew from the last time. But I disagree with them. If they do again, they're going to change their medication. I would go with that. Even with seven of us. She everything. Hell, she was like 1,000. I'd say 200, probably 6, 7 months later. She's not going to lose weight for good. She's still eating. So, you know, we pretty much want to eat whatever she wants. She's doing well, I guess, better when they're smoking. Then when they come over. My mother's like, I guess. Yes, the main thing. And I guess Lisa, I also saw Lisa briefly at the dump the other day. I guess she better be jogging.
All right, we have a few more people coming in and getting all squared away. We're going to get started in just a couple of minutes. I just want to try and get everybody through the door before we get going. Please note that you should have your town report with you. And if you turn to the blue pages, all the way back to 102, that's where we'll start with the operating budget once we get through everything that we did yesterday. So if you're looking for a little light reading before we get started, I would turn to page 102. All right, everybody, if you could, please do your best to find a seat or at least a space to stand. We are going to get started. If you could all please make sure that your phones are either turned off or on silent. I will make sure mine is off. And now, if you could all join me standing for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all so much. There's an awful lot of time and energy that goes into the production of our elections and our town meeting. And there's a lot of people I would like to thank. Specifically, our town clerk's office. Kelly Skeehan in particular, who heads up the organization of all that went on yesterday and tonight. Our, yes, I agree. Our selectmen's office also. Our town administrator. Our public works director and highway crew for all the work that it takes for the setup for both the town elections and the town meeting. Everyone plays a role in getting all of that set up and run efficiently. At this time, I would like to do some introductions for those of you who don't know our town clerk and tax collector, Kelly Skeehan. I definitely think she deserves a second one. She's going to kill me for that. To my left, I have selectman Sue Simpson. Selectman Brian Keys. Selectman Jonathan Smith, our chairman. Our town administrator, Matt Sawyer. Our town attorney, Matt Decker. And our public works director, T.J. Eldridge. To my right, I have our budget committee. I will introduce our budget committee chairman, Joe Goss. And then his committee will introduce each of themselves.
Oh, I get it in first?
Bob, that's you.
Just Bobby Roach.
Thank you. All right, everyone, as you came in and checked in, you should have received a town report. You should have also received a voter card attached to the guidelines for the town meeting when you checked in. It looks like this. At the end of the evening, if you would return your voter card to the ballot clerks, we will recycle those. But for now, if you would take a look at the guidelines for town meeting. These are the guidelines that guide us each year. But I will go through them because I think we have a lot of new faces in the audience and that makes me happy. So each registered voter must possess a voting card to be able to speak or vote. Each speaker must be recognized by the moderator. And to do that, you please go to the microphones. Those, like I said, those wishing to speak must go to the microphone. The only exception to being in a microphone to speak is to move or second an article. But please make sure we know who you are so we can put it in the minutes. State your name when called upon to speak. And please, speakers should address the moderator and should be directed through me on questions and comments. Please refrain from using the names of others. And of course, there's no name-calling or foul or abusive language. It's very important with this number of people here that we keep everything orderly and civil. And we'll only have one person speak at a time. I'll only recognize one at a time. To address any article, it must first be read by the moderator. Then we will have it moved and seconded. Then we will open it up for discussion. The person making the motion will have the first option to address the article. Selectmen or budget committee members will be offered an opportunity to speak to any issue, whether it is recommended or not. To call the question, which is a motion to end debate on any issue, it will only be addressed if the moderator has recognized the speaker. And that will be followed by a two-thirds majority vote to end the debate. Voting cards must be displayed for all votes unless otherwise directed. That might be for a secret ballot. So if we want to have a secret ballot, you can have it requested for any article. You should have at least five signatures. And the petition should be submitted prior to the vote, not obviously after the vote. All petition signers must be present when we do the secret ballot vote. And we will do, we'll make sure everybody's in attendance. Seven or more voters may request a secret ballot if the result of a non-ballot vote is questioned. This may be submitted orally or in writing, either way. But the seven voters must be present again. I am your sole authority in all decisions. But of course, a simple majority can always overrule. Any questions on the guidelines before we get started? Okay. So now I will read the results from both the school and the town. I will start with the school. So for Article 1, the school board member at large for the three-year term, Brody Deschays, was running unopposed. And he received 2,381 votes, winning that election. For the school board member for Effingham for the three-year term, Nathaniel Williams was running unopposed. He received 2,324 votes and he won that election. For school board member in Osiphe for three years, Robert Bowie received 899 votes and Danielle Van Dusen, 1503. For the school district moderator, Caitlin Purdy-Murphy, received 2,433 votes. For the various articles, Article 2 for the operating budget, and this is really significant. The yes votes were 1,527 and the no votes were 1,531. So it was defeated by only four votes. Just goes to show how important it is. Article 3, yes votes, 1,751 votes. For no votes, it was 1,526, so Article 3 passed. Article 4, yes votes, 2,044. No votes, 1,153, that passed. Article 5, yes votes, 1,872. No votes, 1407. Article 5 passed as well. Article 6, yes votes, 2,056. No votes, 1149. Article 7, yes votes, 2,114 votes. No votes, 1,143. Article 8, yes votes, 2,104. No votes, 1,163. And Article 9, yes votes, 2,177. No votes, 1,105. And so all articles passed other than the operating budget. For the town, results. For the office of selectmen, Susan McGuire Doyle received 213 votes. Jay Murphy, 10 votes. Steven Brown, 21 votes. Kyle Copeland, 345 votes. Dallas Emery, 77 votes. Kyle won that election. Town clerk, Kelly Skeehan, 622 votes, unopposed. Trustee of the trust funds, Cassandra Johnson, 142 votes. Kate Alexander, 47 votes. Angela Eldridge, 350. Tracy Fernandez, 90. So Angela Eldridge won that election. Cemetery trustee, Kate Alexander, 84 votes. Crystal Eldridge, 412 votes. Cassandra Johnson, 130 votes. Crystal Eldridge won that election. For library trustee, Patricia Postel, 468 votes. Terri Susoris, 348 votes. There were two positions, so both have made it in. Budget committee, Edwina Boos, 348 votes. Robert Bowie, 258 votes. Robert Roach, 288 votes. Again, there were two positions, so that went to Edwina Boos and Robert Roach. For planning board member, Sherry Cohen received 482 votes. And in a writing campaign, Michael Durant received 111 votes. So they both got those positions. For planning board member for two years, David Doyle received 454 votes. That was unopposed. And zoning board of adjustment, Daniel Carl, received 252 votes. And Scott Morgan received 302 votes. So Scott won that election. On the back of the ballot was a number of articles, zoning articles. For each, I will go through. Article 2, 324, yes to 280, no, so that passed. For Article 3, yes, 351. No, 262, so that passed. Article 4, yes, 335. No, 266, so that passed. Article 5, yes, 295 votes. No, 304 votes, so that failed. Article 6, yes, 278 votes. No, 306, so that failed as well. Article 7, yes, 330 votes. No, 269, that passed. Article 8, yes, 300. No, 284, so that passed. Article 9, yes, 313. No, 283, so that passed. Article 10, yes, 362 votes. No, 235 votes, so that passed. Article 11, yes, 322 votes. No, 264 votes, so that passed. Article 12, yes, 306 votes. No, 285, so that passed. Article 13, yes, 337. No, 313, so that passed as well. So those were the results of the school and town elections yesterday. Our swearing-in of the new officers will be held here in the town hall gym on Monday, March 17th, at 5:30. And now we will move on to asking, do I have any members of the body that are not registered voters in the town of Osiphe wishing to speak on any of the articles here tonight? If you are, can you please come to the microphone, announce your name and what articles you wish to be speaking on? Behind you.
Hello, my name is Karen Albert. I represent Way Station in North Conway. And I'm going to be speaking on one of the warrants.
Okay, on the Article 14, the operating budget?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any objections to her speaking? Okay, thank you. Justin?
Justin Chapie, recreation director. General recreation questions in Article 31.
Okay. Are there any objections to Justin? Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
On behalf of the Osiphe Library for Article 16, I'm in general library questions.
Okay, any objections to that? Okay, thank you. Yes?
Doris Saroy, if there are any questions for the Freedom Food Campaign.
Okay, perfect. Any objections to Doris? All right, thank you.
Tony Eldridge, Public Works Director.
Say that again, your mic wasn't on.
Tony Eldridge, Public Works Director. Any questions on any of the departments?
Okay. Any objections? Mr. Decker?
I'm Matthew Decker from the law firm, Johnny Woodson. I'm one of the attorneys that represents the town of Osiphe.
Perfect, thank you. Any objections or anybody else wishing to speak that is not a registered voter here? Oh, sorry, Matt.
Matt Sawyer, town administrator.
Any objections? Anybody else wishing to speak? All right, perfect. Moving on, we will open with our chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. First off, I just want to recognize Sue Simpson for her dedication and service to this town over the last two terms as selectman and her previous 25 years as the selectmen's office secretary. So I just want to give her a round of applause. Thank you. I also want to recognize the Honorable Dave Babson, who passed this last year. He was a state representative for many years and also a county commissioner. And I also want to acknowledge Mr. Connie Billings, who has served this town for more than a decade, multiple roles. They both will be missed. Just want to give a moment of silence for them, please. Thank you. I have another announcement. I know over this past year, this is kind of off-topic, but the moderators give me a little latitude. At the police department, you know, we purchased a brand-new facility. The old one was for sale. Today, we signed a purchase and sales agreement. That chapter's going to be closed. It'll be back on the tax rolls and it'll be another business coming into town. So for that, we're grateful. And that money will go back into the revenue stream within the operating motion. On that note, everyone should have received a letter that I drafted. I'm going to read that if you want to follow along. You might have it within your book. If not, just please listen. Dear voters, I want to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to everyone for being here tonight. The decision you've made to participate in this process is a sacrifice. But it is also a responsibility you've embraced. First, I want to acknowledge the outcome of the recent election and extend my congratulations to all those who were elected. I have never witnessed an election filled with so much hatred, negativity, and bitterness. This does not reflect on who we are. We are a community of diverse, wonderful people. And though we have differences, we are united as one. Now that the election is behind us, my hope is that we can all come together for the future of this town, which I hold so dearly. The budget before you is a result of months of hard work and collaboration between the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee. It involves thoughtful discussions and at times differing opinions. However, in the end, a consensus was reached and this is the budget that represents our efforts. On behalf of everyone who worked diligently to bring us to this point, I respectfully ask for you supporting and approving this budget tonight. I'd like to close with a quote from John Adams from 1770. "Facts are stubborn things. And whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations, or the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state..." dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state of facts and evidence." Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you would open your books to one hundred and one, one hundred and two, we will get started on the business of tonight. We begin on Article fourteen, because all of our elections yesterday and the votes on those articles on your ballot were one through thirteen. So that's why we start on Article fourteen. And before I read, I just want to go through our process that you will see multiple columns, the 2024 budget is passed, then the 2025 Board of Selectmen recommended budget, and then the 2025 Budget Committee recommendation. We operate under the Budget Committee recommendation, so if there is anything to be changed, we change that number, and we vote on that number, we discuss on that number. So if there's ever any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. And though we do go line by line, we discuss each of them, and we vote on each of them, what we ultimately do will look at the total line, bottom line, and we will have to vote on the entirety of Article fourteen after all of the discussion. So if there's any questions about that, certainly, please let us know. Are there any questions about procedure before we start? Again, if you'd like to be recognized, please go to the microphone, state your name, and we'll go from there. All right, starting with Article fourteen, the operating budget, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven million, nine hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. This is recommended by the Selectmen, recommended by the Budget Committee, and a majority vote will be required. We start with the first line item, the Selectmen's salary, twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Is there any discussion on that line item? Oh, I did not. Is there a motion on the floor for Article fourteen? Thank you, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'm a little bit rusty, it's been a year, Tom. Now, we can move on to the Selectmen's salary, twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty All right, all those in favor, please raise your green placards. All those opposed? Thank you. For the next line item, for Town Clerk and Tax Collector, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is there any discussion on that line item? If you have, if you wish to be recognized, head to the microphone, state your name.
Roy, I don't understand this, but is this her salary, or is this for operating the town clerk?
Okay, yeah, and I will let Kelly address that question.
So yes, that is my operating budget.
And not her salary? Is there any other discussion or questions on that line item? All those in favor, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. For elections, five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, please raise your placards. All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to voter registration, three thousand, three hundred dollars. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Treasurer, eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Selectmen's office, one million, ninety-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Economic Development, seven thousand, three hundred dollars. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Legal, seventy-five thousand dollars. Any discussion? Mr. Lang?
Yes, could the Selectmen explain their recommendation to twenty-five thousand dollars more?
Yes. Mr. Smith?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So, our legal line is comprised of general obligations for the Selectmen's office, covers the Police Department, it covers the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, it covers building and zoning enforcement. Last year, we spent roughly a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen thousand. About fifty thousand of that was for general obligations for the items I just stated. The other sixty thousand was for building and zoning enforcement. Building, excuse me, building and zoning enforcement is an expensive process. It's the will of the people. This body has passed it previously, previously, way back in the late eighties, and then the building enforcement twice over the last twenty-five or thirty years. The process, I'm going to have to, Madam Moderator, give me a little latitude on this?
Yes, as long as you're answering the question.
Yes, I'm just going to explore into why we're at the hundred and ten thousand. The process is, currently, we have thirty-five cases that I've closed with the zoning office, meaning people have come into compliance. There are seven cases that are currently in court. The town has prevailed in those cases, but they're still waiting for the final closure on them. Two cases are completely closed. Part of the zoning enforcement process is recovery of funds, and I'm going to get into that, which takes expenditures through the legal line. Currently, we have recovered twenty thousand dollars back, paid directly back to the town for actions taken in both building code and zoning enforcement. We currently have outstanding thirty-three thousand that has been billed as liens, which will come back to the town at some point in the future. We have collected another seventy thousand through a share of sale of a property. We also have outstanding, waiting on the court to approve, we've prevailed in court, we're just waiting to reclaim the funds, of a hundred and forty-four thousand. So in total, that's a grand total of almost two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that will be coming back to the town. This is not a for-profit business, but this is, you have to expend legal funds in order to follow through on the process in court. Without the legal line, it's like having a speeding ticket without fines. This office will only be able to send a warning letter, a warning letter if the person chooses not to follow their process. The next step is to go to court. That is the process. That is the will of this body. If this legal line is not increased, which is your choice, I'm indifferent on it. I'm here to, I take an oath to follow the law. Zoning and building enforcement is the law. We are required to follow it. If you choose not to increase that line, what does this mean? This means if you have a complaint, and that, whatever it may be, a septic system failure, garbage, junkyard, you know, dilapidated, whatever it may be, someone building a structure on the line, without having the ability to go to court, which takes money, it's going to be nothing but a kind request through this office with just a general letter, which ultimately has no teeth. And if, if that's the direction the town wants to go, I would suggest next year, you put a warrant on it, and to do away with building and zoning enforcement, because you can't have it both ways. You can't have the law here asking us to follow our oath, and then expect us not to be able to follow our oath if it's not funded. So part of that is, we want to get up to a hundred thousand dollars. We spent a hundred and ten last year. Seventy-five is not going to be enough. We have multiple cases, but again, you've got to remember, a lot of this money comes back. It comes back to you, not directly today. It goes as a property lien, where sometimes that person chooses to pay that lien. So it's not, it's not wasted money, it's doing the duty that is required under our oath of office. So I ask, and I will make a motion, to increase it up to a hundred thousand dollars right now, Madam Moderator.
You know better. It needs to be in writing.
Oh, sorry, I'll give it to you in writing.
So, just to clarify, what's happening here is, the Board of Selectmen recommended budget was a hundred thousand, but the Budget Committee recommended budget is seventy-five thousand, so we work off of the seventy-five thousand. So Mr. Smith is making a motion to amend that seventy-five thousand dollars, to increase it by twenty-five thousand dollars, so that the total is a hundred thousand. Is there a second on that motion to amend?
I will second that.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to amend seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. So at this point, we will only be discussing that amendment, that increase by twenty-five thousand dollars. Mr. Postel?
Bob Postel, West Ospey. Would I be correct in thinking, I think I understand our system, that if that additional twenty-five thousand is not expended for some reason, if it's a good year, the surplus would just roll into municipal funds? It doesn't evaporate or anything, right?
You are correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I could expand one step further on that.
I don't think you need to yet. Mr. Goss?
The reason why we went and dropped it is because in two thousand twenty-three, we raised it from forty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand. We felt that another increase a year later would be too much. I think the town, I think the Board of Selectmen and need to go and pick their battles a little bit more wisely, and try and keep these costs down. And it was a large vote that we do drop it to the twenty-five thousand, the same figure as last year. They had already had a thirty thousand dollar increase from the year before. We didn't feel that they needed another twenty-five thousand this year.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. It's been my understanding that every time that the town asks for money for legal fees, they never meet that goal, they always go over it. So why are we voting on this number that's just a number that's made up out of thin air, and then they always double it?
Okay, Mr. Howard?
Right, Howard, West Ospey, I could direct a question to the Selectmen.
Of course.
So this is basically a situation where we have to appropriate the funds to be able to spend the money for the attorneys, but we're then going to have the funds that are then coming back in as another form of revenue, no different than us collecting taxes, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Howard.
So with us appropriating this increased dollar amount, all we're doing is, we're authorizing you to spend up to that amount with the expectation that the funds are going to be collected on the other side to offset that extra expenditure.
That is correct, but I'd like to add one additional point to that. There are legal monies, general obligations through the Selectmen's office, planning, zoning, the Police Department, there's no method of recovery on that, that's just the legal guidance. But through building and zoning, you are correct.
But that's what your increase is designed to handle, is that increase workload. And I would just like to make a comment, up until a few years ago, I had come to the town repeatedly about certain zoning violations that the town chose to take no action. And I had noted to the Selectmen that it is their responsibility to enforce zoning. If they chose not to enforce zoning, they're basically being derelict and doing their duties. So here in the last few years, it's been encouraging to me to see that the zoning ordinance that was voted upon and approved by the townspeople to help protect their properties, that it's actually being enforced.
Thank you. Mr. Goss?
The funds of seventy-five thousand dollars is not a cap. The Selectmen have authority to move line items around, as if they did last year. The budget was seventy-five thousand dollars. They spent over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Though it is not a cap, that this is, that they can move, if they need to, they can move money from other line items to cover that expense. So the comment of it being a cap, it is not.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. That is correct, what Jill just stated, but when you budget, budgeting is a best guess. This whole budget before you is what we project, what we think we're going to need for the coming year. We project we're going to need a hundred thousand dollars based on previous year's spending. So what Mr. Goss's suggestion would be like TJ coming to us and saying, I need a hundred thousand dollars for salt, but we're only going to budget fifty, and we're just going to take it from other parts of the budget. You don't do that. That's not how you budget, that's not the process. We should go to a hundred, if we need it, we need it, if we don't, it goes back to you, the taxpayer. It doesn't go anywhere else, it goes back to you. Thank you.
Mr. Postel?
Bob Postel, again, he kind of said what I wanted to say, but that's exactly my point to Mr. Goss's remark is, the whole idea of budgeting is, budget what you anticipate you're going to spend. If we're lucky, we'll come out pretty much even on all the lines, if need be, we rob Peter to pay Paul here and there, but we don't want to set the robbery up ahead of time. We want to have what looks reasonable to start with and go from there. I think we're much better off not robbing Peter and Paul even before we get going.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Postel just kind of proved my point. In the last four years, our legal fees have doubled every single year. I don't understand why we need to keep spending this kind of money to wrongfully prosecute people. And in fact, the Zoning Board is wasting taxpayers' dollars where they should just be talking to people and figuring things out.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this amendment? You have to go to the microphone, Ms. Katie.
And Katie West Ospey, I was just going to call a question.
Yeah. Okay, well, if there's, was there any other discussion beyond that anyway? We don't need to call the question if there's no further discussion. Seeing none, we will come to an immediate vote, only on the amendment, and this is just on the line item of seventy-five thousand dollars to increase by twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand. So we're just voting on the amendment and that particular line item, and then we will move on. So all those in favor of the amendment to increase by twenty-five thousand dollars, please hold your placards. All those opposed? We're going to do a count, so placards down, and can I have my ballot clerks come to their sections? So what this will be is, I'm just going to have ballot clerks come around and count, so I will ask you again to hold your placards up, and when they're ready, and you just hold it up until I tell you to put them down. You guys ready?
No, I'm not.
If someone else is holding your placard, make sure you have one. Trish, you ready? All right, all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your placards high, hold them up until I tell you to put them down. Ballot clerks, are you done with the count? You don't have to have them added up, just counting. All right, placards down. All those opposed, please raise your placards high and keep them held high until I tell you to put them down. All right, placards down. I will wait for the count, and I will read the results, and All right. For yes, 97 votes. No, 77 votes. The amendment passes. That line item will go to 100,000. Moving on to Planning Board, 11,750. Is there any discussion on that line item?
We don't.
We don't because it was a positive amendment, and then we will vote on the entirety of Article 14 when we're done. But we won't vote to amend to 100,000, and then vote on 100,000, and then vote on the entirety. So because it's a positive amendment, not a negative, we go with the line. So moving on to Planning Board, 11,750. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, please raise your placards. All those opposed, thank you. That passes. Moving on to the ZBA, 3,400. Any discussion? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. Moving on to Government Buildings, 319,928. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. That passes. Moving on to Trustee of the Trust Funds, 7,040. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, all those opposed, thank you. Moving on to Cemeteries, 74,958. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. That passes. Moving on to Insurance, 175,425. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. For the Police Department, Any discussion on the Police Department line item? All those in favor, all those opposed, thank you. That passes. For Police Special Duty, 37,025. Any discussion? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. For Dog Officer, 14,450. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. For the Fire Warden, 22,070. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. Moving on to the Highway Department, 1,596,650. Any discussion? Yes, sir?
Andy Northrup, Oscepe. Half a year ago, when the town decided to purchase a new building for the Police Department, the Selectmen argued that they didn't need the public's permission because they were moving funds around. They took about 300,000 from the paving fund. Because, of course, we're going to sell the building, and it won't be a problem. But if we don't sell it, we'll take 300,000 from the paving fund. If you look at this budget this year on page 43 in this handy little handout, the paving budget this year is now 600,000. So as much as I'd like to do paving, just like everybody else does because our roads suffer, I'd like to make an amendment to reduce that number by 300,000 and make sure that we don't have that extra money in the budget, and we can recoup it when we do in fact finally sell the old police station.
Thank you. Can you put your amendment in writing and bring it up to me so we can mark it down? So there is a motion to amend the Highway Department?
That line item, point of order?
So the line item on the floor, okay, is the Highway Department for 1,596,650. So that's what can be motion to amend at this point. Is that, sir, Mr. Northrup? I don't know where he went. Are you looking to amend this line item, or are you looking to amend a paving article later on in the warrant?
I'm looking to amend that line.
Okay. So is there a second to amend that? Thank you. And so is there any discussion? We heard from Mr. Northrup about that. Mr. Northrup, do you want to speak more, or is it okay if I let somebody else speak while you're writing?
I don't think so.
Okay. Mr. Goss, do you have a comment?
This is not the place to take away the 300,000. This is the operating budget of the Highway Department. If you want to take away the 300,000, you should do it later on when the ad hoc comes up for paving. It is 600,000. I do not feel that it is, this is the proper place to do that. But that's your choice.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Yes?
Oh, I have a question. Cindy Spencer, Oscepe Corner. On page 37 under the MS 737, last year, this was listed under the 4312. This year, it says Highways and Streets. This year, it's under 4311, which says Highway Administration. Was that just a hiccup in the column chart?
Matt, do you want to address that?
The 737 has a tremendous amount of leeway to it. Basically, it's a bottom line budget. But we don't vote based on 737 really, as long as the totals match. So it's kind of irrelevant. There's multiple categories that often things can fit into. We had this discussion about conservation. Every year, people get a little bit hung up on the line, but I would say it's inconsequential, frankly.
It was just confusing, whereas last year, it said Highways and Streets, and now it says Administration. So it's like, what happened? Okay.
It's the same thing.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Brown?
Although I agree with Mr. Goss about this not being the place to take the 300,000, I have to say that allowing this administration to spend money wherever they feel it's okay and will put it back is probably not the best way to do it either.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Northrup?
I want to clarify a question. Are you saying in the previous comment that we will vote individual line items in the Highway Department budget, and that paving line item is where we will?
No, there is a warrant article, guys. Where's, which warrant is it?
18.
So warrant article 18 is specific to paving, and it's to raise and appropriate 600,000 specific to paving. So that's why that was confused.
And is that the same amount that's included in that budget?
It's a separate issue.
So, Mr. Smith, can you address that?
Sure. That's a separate appropriation from the operating budget. They're two separate. Paving is not part of the operating budget.
Operating budget is paid staff.
Mr. Pastel, absolutely not.
Pay, pay.
Mr. Smith?
Paving has always been a separate warrant article.
Not included in the original 1.5 million.
Correct.
I will rescind my request for that amendment then. I'll put it in the end.
Thank you. So there is no longer an amendment on the floor. So we are back to the 1,596,650. Is there any discussion on that line item beyond this topic? All right. All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. That passes. Moving on to the Transfer Station, 604,640. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. Moving on to Outside Agencies. So you can see how there's a lighter font for that total. I think it says 137,304. Just like we go line by line for the total operating budget, we actually go line by line for each of the outside agencies. So we're not going to take that line item in particular. We're going to go for each of the line items below it. But ultimately, again, we vote on Article 14 as a whole after we've had a discussion on each line item. So we will start with the OCC Elderly Nutrition for 35,000. Is there any discussion on that? Yes?
Okay, my name is Rula Mallett. I've been on the Board for OCC, and I want to bribe a little bit. We are celebrating our 50th year anniversary of basically supporting Oscepe and Southern Carroll County. That's all.
Is there any other discussion on that line item? All those in favor, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed, thank you. Moving on to OCC Daycare for 7,000. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. We will skip because we don't need to vote on a zero item for Granite BNA and Hospice. We will move on to Northern Human Services, which is 4,425. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. Moving on to Tri-County Cap, 9,837. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, all those opposed, thank you. Moving on to Life Ministries Food Pantry for 6,000. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, all those opposed, thank you. For White Mountain Community Health, 5,185. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, all those opposed, thank you. For Ospey Children's Fund, 22,000. Any All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. For Starting Point, 10,957. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, all those opposed, thank you. For Ospey Historical Society, 4,000. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. For Kingswood Youth Center, 5,000. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. For Caregivers of Southern Carroll County, 2,500. Any discussion? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. For the Freedom Food Pantry, 8,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed, thank you. For N68 Hours of Hunger, 10,000. Mr. Fishbein?
Ash Fishbein, Oscepe. I was requested last year, when I raised 3,000 on the floor here, by Mr. Goss to report on our success, if some were to be found, on a summer program for N68 Hours of Hunger. And I just wanted to provide that report.
Thank you.
So in case people don't know, N68 Hours of Hunger was built to provide food from the moment children get out of school on a Friday until they get fed again on Monday morning. And my big question while we fundraised down at the brewery for this organization all the time was, what happens in the summer? That's like seven million hours. So what I wanted to do is, and what I was happy to hear is that this town allowed us to raise 3,000 to do that. And the report this year that we got, they were able to provide places to pick up. One of the biggest and key factors of this is anonymity. You don't want to call anybody out. So in Oscepe, total number of bags given out for Ospey Children was 497 bags.
This is for the summer?
This is just the summer. Thank you. Great question. And this is just Ospey Children. I do have the other numbers, but this is just Ospey Children. Other bags in the district, just in case you wanted to know, is 96 bags. So the thing that brought me to enjoying the fundraising efforts of N68 Hours of Hunger is being from Ospey, learning about that organization, realizing that the majority of those kids are actually from here. So I take great ownership in that. So I just wanted to provide the report to you, Mr. Goss, that I would say that it was a resounding success, and I was really happy to see the level of funding this year from the Budget Committee. So thank you all very much for that.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on N68 Hours of Hunger for 10,000? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. For Children Unlimited, 3,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, thank you. All those opposed, thank you. For Green Mountain Conservation Group, 2,400. Any discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed, thank you. For the Way Station, 2,000. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Gagnon?
All right, Joy Gagnon, Oscepe. I'd like to make an amendment to this.
Okay.
Because the Way Station serves all of our homeless, and we have quite a few, and a lot of our zoning and a lot of our support.
Ms. Gagnon, I'm going to interrupt you. What is your amendment, if you're going to speak to it?
Let me do it. Sorry. Amend the Way Station from 2,000 to 10,000, which is what they asked for.
Okay. And you'll put that in writing. When you're done, you can bring it up?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Gagnon, you can speak to your amendment. If there's a second. I thought I saw a second. Yeah, thank you.
I just want to point out that in Ospey, it's very difficult for people who are homeless to get support based on our zoning, based on the supports that are available, which forces a lot of people to go into the Conway area where the Way Station is located. And the Way Station serves all of the people that are homeless in Carroll County. And this past year, they've had one staff person that comes to Ospey specifically to work with our clients. that comes to Ospee specifically to work with our clients here. So I just wanted to kind of bring that attention here that the funding that they're asking for is to support our people that live here and to be able to provide that staff to come right here.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion on the floor to amend the dollar amount of $2,000 by $8,000 up to $10,000. Is there any other discussion on that amendment? Yes, Ms. Parker?
Ms. Parker. The question I have is how many Ospee residents have you served in the last year?
Yes, please, to the microphone.
Hi, Karen Albert from the Way Station. 54 is the number that we serve in Ospee. This past for cold weather, we do have amounts that we have put $13,765,000. Did I say 1300? I'm sorry. $13,765 of hotel stays from January through, it'll be through this year. That, pardon me, that was 2024, from January through to April of last year. And that's the cold weather program. The Mountain Granary, we have propane that we buy from them. And we purchase Ospee laundromat cards for ongoing services during the year. So the funding for the laundromat cards is an example of what comes out of the Way Station budget. The person that comes down to Ospee once a week also comes out of the Way Station budget. And Way Station is, as Joy said, the nonprofit agency in Carroll County that serves homeless and housing insecure people. And it was new this year, that in 2024, that we increased the client coordinator from a part-time staff member to a full-time. That enabled that person to come down. And that is a trained professional in counseling. And he comes down and works directly with the clients. There's referrals that we get from many agencies in Ospee, part of the roundtable. And we support those people. The clients also continue to be checked in on and connected with each week. So a phone call is made even if they don't show up to meet with the client coordinator.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this amendment? Mr. Fishbein?
Just requiring, I just want to know, Ash Fishbein, Oscepe. Joy said that this was the number that they had originally asked for. If the budget committee and the selectmen could speak to their decisions on the budget that was approved.
Sure. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'll speak to it from the selectman's side. So, when this was presented to us, it was a five-fold increase. It went from $2,000 to $10,000. We have a great welfare department that the homeless can utilize. They can get assigned to a hotel. They can get assigned to a shelter. In the view of the board at that time, handing out sleeping bags, tents, and gas cards was not a good use of taxpayer money. And it's really that simple. There's no accountability once those cards are hand out, excuse me, handed out. Once the tents handed out, who knows where it goes? The tent could be sold. The sleeping bag could be sold. So the best course of action is we decide to keep it at $2,000. And obviously, the best course of action for a homeless person is to utilize the welfare office. So thank you.
Mr. Goss, do you want to speak to the budget committee?
We, as a budget committee, agreed with the selectmen. We felt that we do have a, again, we do have a welfare department. The funds are available there. And that we're no sense in appropriating the money twice.
Thank you. Ms. Gagnon?
I might have two questions. Or, how many people has the welfare department served that are homeless?
Mr. Goss, do you know that answer?
No, I don't.
Okay. Second question?
I guess maybe it's more a comment that the welfare department, if they're just going to give out like a hotel stay or something, are they offering social services and other supports to help people get off their, like, out of their situation and back on their feet? So an agency that's focused on this is going to be offering more than what we can offer. I just think, why not support them?
Any other discussion? Mr. Emery?
I was trying to stay out of this. I've been very quiet tonight, but I've been, no, listen, I've been watching everybody vote every single one of these things in. And you want to add an increase. I am tired of everybody increasing my property taxes. You people have got to stop. Okay, there is, I don't, I don't want to pay for it. Don't make me. You're forcing me to pay for it. You're forcing me to pay for all of these things. And if I don't pay for it and I can't afford my taxes, guess what? They take my house. That's what happens. I lose it. And nobody cares. Everybody cares about all of these people. They care about the kids. They care about the elderly. They care about the homeless. They care about the sick. They care about all of them. You keep putting it on everybody else's taxes. Mine, I don't want you to put it on. I don't want to pay for it. And you're forcing me. This is robbery. Okay, what you people are doing? You're robbing me.
Dallas, we're talking specifically to the amendment and the amendment only.
Okay. Well, I'm telling you, this is how I feel about it. I've been trying to stay quiet. So I'll leave it alone.
Yes, Ms. Joyce?
Chrissy John West, Ospee. I'm, I agree with raising it. I work for HHS. I've worked with many people in the community who are homeless or facing homelessness. I believe it takes a village to help them. I have seen the Way Station help people. One thing they can do that our welfare department can't do is after-hours help. If our welfare officer is not in the office, that person might have to wait till Monday or Friday, whereas they can call the Way Station and get, you know, a sleeping bag might not seem good to you, but I highly doubt they're selling it if they're out there in the 90, you know, or 90, 90-degree weather, you know? The laundry cards people question. They can go in and wash their clothes, feel a little humid, but also feel a little heat while they're in there. So, yes, it does come out of our pocket, but it takes a, it takes a village. And I've seen this benefit people.
Thank you. Ms. Lang?
Cheryl Lang, Ospee. I agree it takes a village, but I'm curious why the two programs don't work together? It seems like they could work well together and support each other instead of fighting for the money that we have to pay in taxes. I agree with Dallas. It's hard to keep adding and adding and adding, but we don't want to take away from the services that people need. So maybe you could consider talking to the welfare department. And what you do could be, I don't know, maybe somehow you can collaborate.
Thank you. Mrs. Pastel?
My statement is similar to hers. Who is the welfare department in town? And do the people know where she is? Because I've lived here all this time. And I'm not sure where it is or who it is. And why don't the two budgets work together? And to Dallas, I want to say you should be lucky when living in a town like this, because if something happens to you, I'm sure we'll reach out.
Mr. Smith, do you want to respond to the question about the welfare office?
Sure. The welfare office is located at the freight house. It has regular office hours. And there's also a, the calls are answered regularly. They're transferred from the office to the welfare director's cell phone.
Thank you. Ms. Katie?
Are the funds and assistance provided by the welfare office grants so that it doesn't have to be repaid? Or is it just a loan? And whoever receives them has to pay the welfare office back?
Mr. Smith?
So my understanding is that all depends. They're not, a lot of the money can't, if you own a home and you come in for fuel assistance, there could be a lien placed upon your home. If you come in and you're homeless and you have nothing, then no, nothing, that's just considered taxpayer money granted away.
Okay. I'm very familiar with the Way Station. And all their stuff is donated, purchased by their budget, given to people who need it. And when I see these nights where it gets below zero and know that we have people out there in Arctic tents, yes, and sleeping bags are living in their car, $10,000 doesn't seem like it's even enough to take care of the people that we are told, if we're people of faith, we are told we are to take care of. And so I urge raising it to $10,000.
Thank you. Ms. Brad?
Thank you. The whole need for this Way Station is because the welfare department in Ospee turns these people away. That's the reason that this has happened. And they tell the Way Station, take care of our town. That's the way this is going. And anybody that doesn't believe that, all you have to do is talk to the welfare officer. She's here somewhere, I just saw her. They turn people away constantly. And the Way Station takes care of them. That's what happens in this town.
Thank you. Mr. Emery, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did. So, why aren't you doing something like putting a thermometer out in the front of the building like they used to do when they raised the church steeples to raise money for this particular program? Why are you continuing to put it on property taxes? This is the problem. This is theft. I'm sorry, but it is theft. You don't have a right to keep coming after people's property. And I got to leave it alone because I'm getting upset with this whole deal.
Are there any other comments on this amendment? Mr. Oaks?
I'd just like to say, I've had dealings to Waypoint, not the one in Conway, but I do work at the jail part-time, building bikes, and we donate to Waypoint and everything else. They do a great job. And it is, you know, you've got to, it does take a neighborhood to raise people and to help people out. That's what we should be here for.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? All right. We don't need to move the question if there's no further debate. So the amendment is to increase the line item for the Way Station from $2,000 to $10,000. All those in favor of that amendment, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. We're going to have to do a count. So could I have my ballot clerks, please? Trish, are you ready? Thank you. Crystal, we're good? All right. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your placards. Hold them high. Keep them there until you can be counted. And I will let you know when to put them down. Are we good? All right. Placards down? Thank you. All those opposed? Placard high. Raise them. Keep them up. All right. You can put your placards down. I'll give you the tally in just a minute. All right. This amendment passes 87 to 74. So the line item for the Way Station will now read $10,000. And we will move on to the ambulance for $449,000. Is there any discussion on the ambulance? Say that again?
The total of all the organizations? No?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll do the bottom line at the end. We don't have, do the subtotals of each category. Thank you for checking. So moving on to the ambulance, $449,000. Yes, ma'am?
Tracy Frentes, West Ospee. Can you, can I just have an explanation what the ambulance money is for?
Yes. Mr. Smith?
Basically, a subsidy. We're in a multi-town agreement. And every town has a portion of the contract to pay. And then, of course, they still charge dearly if you have to use a service. But it, there's no better word for it. It's a government subsidy to attract a contract ambulance.
Is this for action, EMS?
Yes.
Okay. So unfortunately, my husband had a stroke not too long ago, and we had to use 911. They're not an in-service network provider. I just want to let you know that. So we got a $21,000 bill because we call 911 and everything. And I have Blue Cross Blue Shield, a gold plan, I mean, the catalog of insurance policies. And they are not an in-service network provider. So I think we need to reevaluate who we're contracting with.
Side note, not for a town meeting, but they, if you, if your insurance isn't going to cover it, they'll usually negotiate that way down. It'll still be waiting by.
We tried. We've been fighting for over a year. They won't budge.
Send me an email.
Thank you.
That's terrible.
Yes. Budget committee down on the end?
I wanted to make a comment. The ambulance being out of network. And according to the ambulance with what's been happening, they've been, most ambulances are out of network with insurances. And it has nothing to do with necessarily this one and Blue Cross Blue Shield. Because I did the research because of my ambulance bill that I also got. So I have looked into it. I did call. And it's probably nothing that we can discuss right now. But a lot of the ambulances are not in-network for insurances.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Greg Howard, West Ospee. Question for the selectmen. What year of the contract are we currently going into?
Mr. Sawyer?
On behalf of the selectmen. We extended it, the six or seven towns reempt the contract on like year three of five for an additional five years. So we have a long way to go. I think 29 or 30 is, yeah, the current. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayford?
Jim Hayford, Center Ospee. I will vote for this, but I will say to the out-of-service or out-of-network, $12,000 ambulance ride to Huggins from Center Ospee with action, where the last contract ambulance we had, North Conway Ambulance, was no bill at all. And that was with Anthem Insurance. So I'm happy to vote for it. I'm happy when they show up, but it is a concern.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this line? All right. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. I missed Jack.
David Oil, Center Ospee. Quick question for the selectmen. I know the ambulance contract is based upon number of calls. The ambulance goes on a lot of calls that they shouldn't be going on a building for. Trees on wires, outside fire, stuff like that. They don't need to be there. So if they're charging you for that call, they shouldn't be charging you. You might want to reassess your contract.
Mr. Smith?[1758.15]
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I know the fire chiefs, Center Oscepi, West Oscepi, Oscepi Corner, have all met and discussed the ambulances, and in their opinion, the service is adequate. They didn't have any deficiencies noted. That was one of the concerns we had as a board to assess, because they are the boots on the ground. The fire departments are the boots on the ground. They're the ones interacting with the ambulance. So we've never had negative feedback from the chiefs regarding the ambulance service or building.
Yes.
Brenda Feely in Oscepi. I just have a question. I live near the nursing home, and there's ambulances back and forth all the time. There's always two, almost as far as I can see. If there's a call, two ambulances come. And at least one is from our local fire department. So does this, is this money going to our, like, our, like, Oscepi Fire Department when their ambulances come out to? Or is this a, like, a whole separate ambulance company?
Mr. Smith?
It's a third-party company, Action Ambulance. This is, that's contracted through the multi-town agreement.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. That passes. Moving on to emergency management, $6,700. Any discussion on emergency management? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. For general assistance for welfare, $32,450. Any discussion on this line item? Yes. Mr. Goss?
I would like to amend this line item to reduce it by $8,000.
Thank you. So there is a motion to amend the $32,450 by $8,000. Is there a second? There is a second? Okay. Thank you. So now we will move into discussion on the amendment. If you would like to speak, come to the microphone. And Mr. Goss first, do you have anything you want to say?
Yes. The reason for this is, there seems to be an opinion here that, that the welfare department is not working to your satisfaction. That waystation is doing a better job. The welfare department is not even spending half of this allotment of money that they're getting each year. So why don't we take it from one and give it to the other?
Thank you. Yes?
Rhonda Ryder, Center Oscepi. I definitely agree with that, Joe. I just want to know, that was my question, is how much is the welfare department spending? Because I know last year, I had family members that went to the welfare department and were refused. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have an answer to that question more specifically than Joe? No? Okay. But, all right. Ms. Gagnon?
I think first of all, that, what she just said is what happens often, and that's why, at least is what I hear, as to why people aren't using welfare here in town. But I thought we were supposed to have $40,000 or something by law in that budget. Could you, well, you're shaking your head, but is that fact or is that, you had your quote?
Yeah, we can appropriate whatever we choose at this body. There is no minimum required. You can put zero in it, but welfare is something that has to be provided by law. So the money has to be found. If we had an explosion up to $100,000 in expense, we'd have to find that money in the operating room. That's, that's the fact of the matter. So cutting it, I don't agree, welfare is an emergency fund. If there's an explosion and people come in, it'd be nice to have some money in that account. If you cut it, you cut it. It'll be found someplace else.
So maybe I'll just ask this last. Do you have a report showing how many people are coming to the welfare department and how many people are being turned down by it? Because it seems like we should be using this money, and we should be helping people.
So obviously, that was discussed through the lanky budget process. I brought a stack of applications that people have come, came in and filled out and never followed up on. So that is a common problem. So to obtain welfare, there are guidelines. There are state requirements. You must fill out an application. You must follow the process. It's just not money handed out freely. You have to follow the legal process. We are governed by law. And there's a stack. I can't share who's within that stack, but I did bring it to the Budget Committee to reflect on the fact that people are coming in and not following through. The not-follow-through is the choice of the person. It's not a reflection on the welfare office.
Ms. Pastel?
Yes. I'd just like to restate Joe's statement in a more positive manner, that he would like to see the Budget Department and the Conway group work together. So he's going to take some money from the welfare to have it go to this organization where they seem to counsel, and maybe, as Jonathan says, that person who doesn't have the ability to really ask for the money, it would be better suited there and would help more people, which would be a very nice way. I don't often agree with you, but I think it's a good idea. And I like to phrase it in a positive way so that it might get more votes. Thank you.
And I would like to phrase it that we, the body, will make this decision and not Joe. Ms. Jones?
I am against this because the waystation helps homeless people. The welfare department helps anyone who has needs. They might not be meeting their rent. They might need heating assistance, but they don't qualify through CAP or they're going to use that. So it's more than just what the waystation does. And I had another thought. It got in my head. But basically, there's more to it. I, oh, I don't know what it was. I vaguely remember, I don't know if the welfare officer is here tonight, but when we did raise her budget at one point last year or the year before, she said the reason she keeps her budget low is because she refers them to other agencies. But that doesn't mean we don't need that money there, as Jonathan said, if there's an emergency, you know? So I think we need to keep it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this amendment to reduce the welfare line item from $32,450 to $24,450? Yes, Ms. Ryder?
Yeah. I definitely think it needs to be reduced, and I think that they all need to work together. And I know for a fact, my son followed through, and so did other people.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Oakes?
I'd just like to say that, you know, over the last couple of years I've been on here, the welfare department hasn't used the whole budget, okay? We have a general fund out there that if we had an emergency and they had to get used, they would have the money they need. And I think this is a way to just put some funds where it's going to do better than not, not raise our taxes, but we have a sludge fund out there. If we have to use it, as I said earlier, all that money comes back from legal, and it goes to that sludge fund, okay? It might all come back to the taxpayers if we reduce at the end of the year, but we have it available to us.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just want to correct my friend on the other side. The unassigned fund balance that Mr. Oakes is referring to, we just can't dip into that without the RA special permission. So that's really not an option for general municipal operations, including welfare.
Any other discussion on this amendment? Mr. Emery?
Yeah, I believe when we had this discussion at the Budget Committee, we were told that the reason people aren't going to the welfare office is because if they take out any money from welfare, they get a lien put on their house, and then they have to pay it back. And that's why people don't want to go through the welfare department.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on this amendment? On the amendment, Ms. Lang?
I would like to know if that's true. I'm curious how much was spent last year. We have what the budget was, but how much was actually spent in the welfare office?
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. So I'll answer the question on the lien. So state law says you shall lien. So that is correct. If you own a home and you come in for assistance, you shall have a lien for that assistance. We've spent roughly through, through November, about $6,100 through November. And I, can I just add one more thing?
Yes.
So this town is very generous through the welfare process. Every outside agency is a form of welfare. Our rec director does an incredible job of referring clients or people that come in to these outside agencies. Why is that? Because the bar to meet welfare is higher than it is at the outside agencies. So that's why we are very generous and share our tax dollars with these outside agencies because it makes up for welfare with a much lower standard to receive those benefits. That is the net benefit of outside agencies.
Ms. Gagnon?
I just wanted to share a really kind of personal story about how uncomfortable this is. When my father died, he was very broke, and we just needed enough money to cremate him and deal with that. And we asked the town for support through the welfare department, and they started asking about, "We're going to take out a lien on your home." And that's a very, very, very awkward and uncomfortable situation to be in when you're just like, "Can we just have $2,000 so that we can put our father to rest?" And to be told you're going to get a lien on your home to do so, super uncomfortable. Any of you have dealt with that? We instantly were like, "Never mind. We don't need the support." And he's dead. It was just very awkward. And I just feel like that kind of, I don't like the fact that people go through that every time they use the welfare department.
Thank you. All right. And I don't see any other discussion anyway. So we will move the question for the amendment to reduce the line of $32,450 for welfare down to $24,450. All those in favor of that amendment, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. This passes. So that line item will now read $24,450. And we will move on to recreation, $254,055. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. That passes. Onto the library, $267,821. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you. For patriotic purposes, $20,000. Any discussion on that line item? Yes, Mr. Emery?
Could I explain that the patriotic purposes, the reason it's up so much is because the fireworks are for $15,000 this year. And I usually push for that. I'm of the opinion maybe we shouldn't do that. And I know everybody would like it, but maybe we should raise the money some other way. Typically, I would go both for that. That's just my opinion.
Gallas, are you proposing an amendment? Or are you suggesting somebody else propose an amendment?
Maybe suggesting somebody else do it.
Is there any other discussion or any other motions out there on patriotic purposes for $20,000? Ms. Pastel?
All right. Do you need someone to do what he just said?
I don't need anyone. Is there any?
I would make the motion that we reduce the fireworks to, how about, $3,000? And we all go--
So Ms. Pastel?
Yes. I'll write it.
Listen, the line item is for patriotic purposes--
Patriotic purposes.
--and it's for $20,000.
Yes.
So will you please write down whatever number you'd like to reduce it by? Are you saying you'd like to reduce it by $3,000?
No, I want to reduce it by $12,000.
You want to reduce it by $12,000?
Yes.
So she is making a motion to reduce the patriotic purposes from $20,000 by $12,000?
Yes.
So that the line item will be $8,000?
Yes.
I need that in writing. And is there a second? There is a second? All right. So is there any discussion on the amendment that that line item will now read?
Twelve, or down by $12,000. So we get lots of flares, lots of non-flammable things that don't cause fires, and I'll write it down. But that's my reason. Non-flammable.
You go write it down. And Mr. Howard, what do you think?
Well, my question is, there would be no fireworks if we reduce this amount, correct?
Yes.
And it's a centerpiece for Old Homewee. Okay? And it's during the holiday. It's associated with the Fourth of July, when we have a tremendous number of people who come here to enjoy that. So I think we're pulling money out of local businesses if we get rid of the fireworks and guarantee the stores associated down off of Route 25 and here along Route 16, when we have all these people come from other towns to go to our fireworks display. We lose that money. So I think it's a net loss. I think it's a bad idea.
Thank you. Ms. McConney?
Hey, Madam Moderator. We're in McConney, West Oscepi. So I used to be on the Old Homewee Committee, and we used to raise money. And we used to fundraise and raise money, and we self-sustained fireworks and the whole week long. And as you know, or may you may not know, a lot of people don't step up to help. So we no longer have an Old Homewee. We didn't have anybody on the boards, and we brought it to the town, asking them if they would take on fireworks because we couldn't, we couldn't sustain it anymore, any longer. So if you don't want to have fireworks on the Fourth of July, then I would vote no. But I think minimum, I mean, that's all that we asked. It's not asking for the whole week of the ice cream socials and, and all the things that went in with Old Homewee. It's just for the fireworks, and I think it's a bad idea if you vote it down. But that's just my opinion.
So to clarify, don't vote no on the amendment?
Don't? Yeah, do not vote--
Vote no on the amendment?
Vote no on the amendment. Vote yes on the $20,000 for the fireworks.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Emery?
Yes, normally, I would agree completely. I fought very hard to make sure we paid for those fireworks. My problem isn't the fireworks, because I love having the fireworks. My problem is the cost. It's gone up extremely high, and it's, we're, we're putting all of these other things in our budget, and we're not taking anything out. So we have to cut somewhere. I don't know where else to cut it. And that's why. And I would love to have fireworks, but maybe we could get donations together before July and maybe get them down there.
Ms. Pastel? Just to make this more positive, because those people like fireworks, I want to reduce it so that the town doesn't have to spend the money on the fireworks. So I want to reduce it to $8,000 from, or $12,000. Take $12,000 away. We have $8,000.
And that's the amendment on the floor. I still need it in writing.
I got it. I'm going to give it to you. The Day of Giving is coming up, and those of you who want fireworks could donate to the Day of Giving. Fireworks were awesome.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So just to be clear, if this money's not appropriated, you're going to lose $1,500 of your tax dollars. That is a down payment on the contract for the provider. So $1,500 will be gone if this doesn't pass, and you won't have your fireworks.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. I saw movement. All right. So we will vote on the amendment, which is to reduce the line item of $20,000 down to $8,000. All those in favor of this amendment, raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? The amendment fails. We are back on the line item for $20,000. All those in favor of the dollar amount of $20,000, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. That looks about right. All right. Moving on to conservation, $10,350. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the interest line of credit, $30,000. Yes, Mr. Northrop?
Andy Northrop, West Oscepi. We've heard repeatedly in the newspaper and elsewhere what great financial condition the town is in. Why are we paying $30,000 on a line of credit if we have all this money in our reserve account?
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you for the question. So this is a, what they call a tax anticipation loan. This money's available, it's a short-term loan, in case there's a sudden surge and people not paying their taxes. We can make our bills. Fortunately, due to our good fiscal policies we have implemented and sound money management over the last five years, we have not had a borrow on that damn loan. However, it would be very foolish because if this town got into a situation where people didn't pay and we couldn't borrow, the town would shut down. People wouldn't get paid. Roadwork wouldn't continue. So it is an emergency cash access immediately that the town can access if needed. So this money that you see appropriated will not be spent if we don't borrow. It goes back to you, the taxpayer, at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Sawyer?
What is the interest rate on that?
Mr. Sawyer?
I think it's eight or, eight or eight and a quarter. It's, it's in line with market rates.
The question was the rate. And say, say the answer again.
We haven't renewed it yet, but if, market rate is, be around eight and eight, eight and a quarter, something like that, that would be consistent with a prime rate type environment.
Mr. Smith?
And obviously, we don't pay that interest until we utilize it. Fortunately, we have-- Fortunately, we have not had to utilize it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the line of credit? Mr. Goss?
I'd like to make a motion, an amendment to this article, that we reduce it by $20,000. Still leaving $10,000 in there, so the line item is open. Money's from other lines could be moved to it in case of an emergency. We have not used this line item in many years. And that would be, and we left that money in there specifically, because if we needed it for the legal budget, that there was money already in the budget, and it could be moved. So it's a good place, if you want to cut it and keep your taxes the same, you can go and take $20,000 out of here to help take the sting out of the $25,000 that you already put back in.
Thank you. So, Mr. Goss, do you have that in writing? And is there a second?
Oh, second.
There is a second. To reduce the dollar amount of $30,000 by $20,000, so that it would be $10,000. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. That is a mistake. We are charged to manage this town. We are managed to keep this town operational. If that TAN note is not applied for and available, and something happens, everyone's going to be complaining when this town shuts down, if the money's not available. The interest alone, if we had a bar of $2 million, would be over $13,000 a month. It adds up very quickly. So when you look at it, the $40,000 is a very small amount of money. I'm sorry, $30,000 is a very small amount of money, considering when two million-dollar borrowing over the course of a month could be $13,000 in interest. I wholeheartedly disagree. This is, it's definitely, definitely a bad, bad choice to go.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah, I mean, we elect budget committee members to help develop, help the selectmen work on developing a budget that's going to take care of the town's needs. And the selectmen are the fiduciaries for the town in regards to determining what our minimum needs are, and then what the extras are, and then figuring out a dollar amount. And that goes back and forth during the budget process that started back in first weekend of November. And I don't understand why we're now going through what I feel should have been the process during the budget process, where we're trying to take money from here to go here, this, that. It was a budget that was put together during this process. I feel we should stick to that as much as possible, because I'm anticipating we're going to be here all night trying to pull money out of certain line items that I think are, it's a wasted effort.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
James Owen. I'm just wondering if, we haven't used this money in a while, is there an account with all the money in it, and how much?
So, thank you for the question. That money goes back to you, the taxpayer. It doesn't get set aside. The money's lapsed at the end of the year. They go back to what they call the unassigned fund balance, and they use that to offset your taxes. It reduces your tax rate.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
So, Joe, might I understand that this money in the past has been used as supplemental income for the legal fund?
It's money that wasn't used, that could be transferred to any line item, not just necessarily the legal fund or any, anything else.
Has it been used in the past to supplement the legal fund?
They, well, to spread their budget.
Exactly. So this is basically just more money to add to the legal fund without saying it. Vote no.
And just a reminder that all comments go through the moderator. We do not have any cross-debate, and nobody speaks without being recognized through the moderator. We are still on the line item amendment to reduce the $30,000 down to $10,000. Is there any other discussion on that amendment? Mr. Goss?
I'd just like to clarify a statement that was made, that, yes, your money, this money does, if it's not spent, goes back into the unreserved fund balance. It doesn't go directly back to you to reduce your taxes. Some of it does, not all of it. It goes into the unreserved fund balance. That's why we have one. We have to maintain a certain amount of money on hand under state regulation to, in an unreserved fund balance. We have way more than that, the necessary amount, in there now. So the statement is of it going, does it go back to you? Part of it does, not all of it.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, are we discussing the amendment?
I just, I need to correct the record on something that was just said, because voters heard something that wasn't correct.
So quickly, and then we're going to be back on topic.
So, Mr. Goss, my friend on the other side referred to it as the unreserved fund balance, which is technically the unassigned fund balance. DRA has a recommendation from seven to 17 percent. We are not beyond our, the selectmen choose to set that policy. We are around 11 percent, 12 percent right now. We are right in the middle. We are not on the high end. We are in a comfortable middle. So the idea that we're sitting on this pile of cash is not true. It's your money, as recommended by DRA. It improves our cash flow. That's part of the reason why we are in good fiscal health, and we have not had to borrow on the TAN note.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All right. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your placards. All those opposed? We will do a count. A reminder that this is going to be a vote on the amendment to reduce the dollar amount of $30,000 down to $10,000. All those in favor of this amendment, please raise your placards. Okay. Placards down. All those opposed to the amendment, placards high. Keep them raised until I tell you to put them down. All right. Placards can go down. Give us just a minute to tally. This one was a close one. Yes, for the amendment, 83 votes. So the amendment passes. So we will reduce the $30,000 down to $10,000. And then we will move on to the vehicle and equipment maintenance, $298,810. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, raise your placards. All those opposed? Thank you. That passes. Moving on to water, $247,955. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. And sewer, $273,630. Discussion on sewer? Yes, Mr. Eldridge.
Just a quick explanation of that increase is the, New Hampshire DES has required us to clean our lagoons at Camp David, and we have signed a three-year contract to do this. And instead of, you know, trying to scrounge for it when we're having issues with generators and the infrastructure, we need to put that amount in there, because it's required by them. There's not much we can do. We have to, we have to do it, and we have to follow the law. So that's the reason for the increase.
Any other discussion on this line item? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Yes?
Madam Moderator, if you would not reconsider?
We can do that after we vote on the warrant article as a whole, which we will do as soon as Kelly gives me the official bottom line. And then we will go from there. We were up $8,000 in the waste station. We were down $8,000 in welfare. We were down $10,000 in the line of, 20,000, down in the interest line of credit. So all told, we're an increase of $5,000 to the bottom line. We are at $7,912,516. Is there anybody who got different math than we did? Okay. So that is the total that we will vote on in its entirety of Article 14. Is there any question on that? All right. All those in favor of $7,912,516, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. That passes. There is a motion on the floor to not reconsider Article 14, and a second. All those in favor of not reconsidering Article 14? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. I just want to point out that Mr. Babson would have voted no on that. So.
He wants to help manage the little play.
All right. Moving on, we have a motion that was brought to my attention prior to the meeting to move the agenda, to change the order of the articles as they have been printed, to move Article 26 up between 14 and 15. So that would be now. So there is a motion for that. Is there a second to move that? There is a second. I will give you a minute to take a look at Article 26. It is the Schools Out warrant article, so that you can make a decision if you'd like to move that up. All right. All those in favor of moving Article 26 to be dealt with next, please raise your placards. All those opposed? Thank you. So we will now move on and deal with Article 26. Article 26, Schools Out Program to See If The Town Will Vote to Raise and Appropriate the Sum of $45,000 for the Schools Out Program. This was submitted by petition. It is recommended by the selectmen and recommended by the Budget Committee six to three. There is a majority vote required. Is there a motion on Article 26? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 26? Yes?
Amy Lucia, West Osiphe resident and on the Schools Out Program Director. Public speaking is not my superpower, so I have written down my thoughts so that I don't panic and forget what I need to say. Osiphe is a town built on strong families, hard work, and looking out for one another. And that's exactly what the Schools Out Program is all about. We help working parents. We give kids a safe place to grow, and we strengthen our community. Every day, we have 40 to 50 kids in our program, and over the year, we serve about 200 children. For working parents, this means peace of mind. They can finish their workday knowing their kids are safe, having fun, and surrounded by friends. Instead of being home alone, the kids are in a positive, caring place where they can thrive. Schools Out starts right after school. The kids get a healthy snack, academic support, and then head to clubs to explore new interests. We offer robotics, art, Legos, chess and strategy games, and more. When the program ends, we even provide transportation home. We also partner with other community programs, like Osiphe RAC, to support families. For example, last fall, when soccer was offered by RAC, some kids came to Schools Out first for a snack and homework club. And our site director, Emily O'Leary, helped them change into cleats, fill their water bottles, and walk them to the field. After practice, Izzy from RAC and Emily made sure the kids got back to Schools Out where they caught a bus home. Working with community programs helps families by making sure kids can join activities, have a snack, and get their homework done. Most importantly, and this is something I'm really proud of, the Schools Out Program is available to all Osiphe students. There's no exceptions. We use a sliding scale fee system based on the free and reduced lunch program, and we offer scholarships so no child is ever turned away because of cost. Schools Out's more than just after-school care. We teach responsibility, teamwork, and problem solving. We're helping the kids build skills for future jobs. So for $45,000, we're investing in families and safety of our children. They say it takes the village to raise a child. Well, Osiphe is that village. And I'm grateful to be part of a community that values and invests in children's future. Thank you.
Carrie Baines? She answered the question. I wanted to know how many children in Osiphe are actually being helped. Perfect. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Goss?
As a lot of people here know, that I have been opposed to this, uh, warrant, this article. I'm not opposed to the program. It's a very good program. But there's flaws in it. One of the flaws is, it's not a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. This is a for-profit agency. The town of Osiphe has no contract, no written contract, like the ambulance contract with these people. So you're giving money, taxpayer funds, to a business-for-profit agency, no different than any other business in this town. So you're opening yourself up to anybody in this business in this town that really wants to push you, and push you in court, could come to this town and ask for money. So you're opening yourself up to anybody in this business in this town that really wants to push you, and push you in court, could come to this town and ask for money. They can be a 501(c)(3) if they wanted to be. The monies are there for them to take the place of the 21st century grant that they get. They also charge for each one of the programs that a child attends to, eighty dollars for those programs, to the parents. And on top of that, the scholarship program that they claim that they get, that they get scholarships for these kids, is coming out of your Osiphe Children's Fund. So that's all I have to say.
Any other discussion on Schools Out? Ms. Barron?
Hi, I'm Karen Barron. I've been in this town since nineteen eighty-eight. I have a twenty-four-year-old daughter who went through the Schools Out program. Other than that, she would have been home six miles away from town by herself after school. I vote for this.
Thank you. Ms. McConity?
Hi, I'm Maureen, Maureen Pondy, West Osiphe. I am in favor of this Schools Out program. This is the best bang for your, by my opinion, the best bang for your family's buck in this town. The money goes directly to the organization, Schools Out, that allows families to work. Without this organization, families aren't going to be able to work a nine-to-five job. They're going to have to try to find daycare in the afternoon, we have a daycare here in town, but they're not going to be able to house forty children a day. There's just no way for these kids to stay home alone. I mean, you see what happens in our communities now with the epidemics that we have, and with these kids having a safe place to be after school. They get a snack, they get an enrichment program, they get help with their homework, and they get a bus ride home, so the parents can work a full job, a full day, eight hours, and get them off the bus at night. And they're safe. So if you want, if you don't want to do this program, you might want to put money back into the welfare, because that's where they're going to be going if they're not going to be able to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fernandes?
Tricia Fernandes, West Osiphe. So I'm a nonprofit certified accountant, and they cannot apply for 501(c)(3) because they're going to lose all of their 21st CCLC grant funds, which funds a lot of the children's scholarships and funding. So they can move the 501(c)(3), but they're going to lose a lot and are going to pay a lot more.
Thank you. Mr. Pastel?
Bob Pastel, West Osiphe. I wanted to make a point as someone who used to own a company that, or not a company, an organization that was not 501(c)(3), and therefore technically was a for-profit corporation, but it never made a nickel. Just because a company on paper can make a profit doesn't mean it is a profit-making enterprise. A 501(c)(3), when called upon, has to prove that it is not out to make a profit and provide benefit to someone other than the clientele they serve. But there's nothing that says that a company that, or corporation that is other than a 501(c)(3) must make a profit. And my understanding, I'd be corrected if someone knows better, is that the organization we are discussing brings in enough to meet its needs, but is certainly not making a profit.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
Thank you. Harry Merrill, Osiphe. I'm in favor of this. I just want to go back a little ways, back a long ways because of my age, I guess, but the, at the time that I was a selectman, for a number of years, I was the selectman's representative to Schools Out, attended the meetings, went to their programs, just stuck with it. It's a great organization. We tried to get a 501(c)(3) back then, and I can't remember all of the reasons, but there was a reason that we could not get a 501(c)(3). Not that we didn't apply, we didn't want to, but this is well-spent money, I urge everybody to pass this.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. I believe we have a budget committee sitting right up there, and they kicked this around quite a bit before they made the decisions and came to the conclusions that they came to. Everybody here has an opinion, and it's usually a good one, but not always. I think that the budget committee should be trusted for their knowledge.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, I just do, before I have any other statements, just want to point out that this was recommended by the Budget Committee six to three.
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yeah, Maureen Barron. I'm going to cut my wife a bit and I'll pay for this later, but my daughter wouldn't have been alone. Basically, we had an agreement. I took care of Ruthie in the morning, put her on a bus so she could go to work, and when she got to work, she picked Ruthie up so I could work late, eat into the dock in the winter, because I'm a self-employed worker, so we could flex our hours. And without that program, we would have been in serious trouble because I couldn't work, and we probably wouldn't have a house at this point due to the rate that taxes are increasing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this article? All right, all those in favor, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-six passes? Yes. There's a motion to not reconsider Article twenty-six, and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Goss. All right, moving on, we will not reconsider Article twenty-six. Now we will move on to Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the Deer Run Boardwalk and Trail ETF, previously established, recommended by the selectmen, recommended by the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article fifteen? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article fifteen? Ms. Banks?
This sounds like a really good, pleasant thing to do. And the people that have worked very hard for it did just that. I think if it's money received from grants, great. However, twenty-five thousand dollars is what we as taxpayers are going to have to pay. Articles, excuse me a minute. This article is going to raise our taxes, and I am not for raising one more dollar. So if everybody here likes to raise taxes, go right ahead. This is a waste of our money.
Thank you. Ms. Gaggen?
I think she was first, but I called on you. All right, sir. First of all, if you're going to go for a grant, they do want to see that the town is supporting something like this, so with our vote, we're actually helping them get grants for this in the future. And also, I remember the beach vote, where we thought that we didn't need a beach. We honestly do. So this is just us voting for our future to have a better community that we can enjoy.
Thank you. Yes.
Jeanne Melroth. We also have Article thirty about the rail trail, to see if the town will vote to establish rail trail expendable trust fund, twenty-five thousand dollars. So I think this one is, should have first priority over this Deer Run thing, Deer Run Trail EFT. So my personal recommend is that we do this Deer Run Trail EFT next year, because that's twenty-five thousand dollars, and so is Article thirty, twenty-five thousand dollars. So do one this year and do one next year.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chris Elliott, I am vice chair of the Friends of Constitution Park. I want to echo the person behind me, Mr. Brown. He gave the Budget Committee a lot of credence for their work. I think the vote was nine to one to support this, and I think it was unanimous by the selectmen. Since last year, you gave us some funds. Since that time, we have gone out and raised one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, not from taxes. You saw the budget statement that's out there. Eighty-six thousand dollars came from getting grants. And anybody who has taken the time to write a grant, you know that that is an arduous process. The rest of the money has come from various fundraising, it has come from going to local businesses and local individuals. Our board has spent considerable time, talent, and I would argue, personal treasure. I saw on social media that somebody suggested we open our checkbook. We have opened our checkbook. In fact, there are some of us that did one-hundred-mile bike rides that raised over seven thousand dollars for this effort. We have put in the time, the talent, and the treasure. This twenty-five thousand will help us get close to the finish line. We're not there yet, but we're awfully darned close. Waiting a year can't be done. We've already negotiated, worked with a contractor, we got the best bid we could possibly get. In addition, this summer, volunteers are going to, in kind donation, rip up the existing boardwalk that's about a ten-thousand-dollar cost. We're going to spend our blood, sweat, I hope not tears, but we're going to be yanking up that boardwalk. Some of you, I know, go to Constitution Park for the fireworks. It's great. If you have not been to Constitution Park and seen all the wonderful things that this organization has done over the last five years, disc golf, dog park, nature trail, storybook trail, pavilion, we have done considerable work, we've had events there to support this community. If you, and this is a year-round community, and it's not just a summer. I just led a group on a snowshoe hike two weeks ago. If you would like, if you haven't been to Constitution Park, look in your hiking brochure, by the way, that's out there. I helped create that. There's an email address in the back where you can see me after the meeting. I'd be happy to take you on a guided tour of the entire Constitution Park. Happy to do that. You pick the time, if unconvenient, I will take you there. We'll do it. We are almost at the end of this wonderful project. We have rediscovered this park and made it a true gem in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to be, say I'm voting supported this, because if you go down there and go to this walk, you'll know that in a few years, it's not going to exist, it's going to just corrode away or whatever, run away. And you'll also know that if you've walked it, that it's just swamp land that it's going through. So you're not going to use that bit of land ever again if this boardwalk goes away. And if you also haven't been down there, there's a great spot on the lake, right at the end, where you can watch the boats going through and things like that. It really is a wonderful spot, and if you haven't been down there, you really should take the time to do so.
Thank you. Ms. Banks?
I want to applaud, I don't know where he just went to, I want to applaud the hard work is done. And although this is a good idea, I question how many people actually take advantage of it and walk this trail. Second of all, just people snowshoeing, why don't you charge them to go snowshoeing? The reason I'm opposed to this now is because our taxes are through the roof. We can't keep adding to these. We're going to have to slit a wrist. This has got to stop.
Thank you. Mr. Elliott?
Well, we did have a counter. In fact, we had two counters on the boardwalk, and we've had very, very little vandalism. But unfortunately, about six weeks ago, someone took something and messed up, hit the counters and knocked them down. So, but prior to that, we had close to four hundred people a month walking along these trails, seeing what's going on. And look, I pay taxes too. I understand it. My taxes went up twenty-two percent, seventeen hundred dollars between June and December. I get it. But sometimes there are causes that develop that are worth it for the entire community to benefit, and I think this is one of those causes where everybody in our community can benefit. Everybody needs a park like this where they can go and relax and enjoy it and have a good time walking the trails, either with your family and your friends, and really get to enjoy the views that are out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lang?
I think there are many short-sighted people. We don't have a beach in town. There's reason for that. We all pay taxes. It sucks.
Yeah, it does.
Okay? But when you lose the assets you have, you're not going to get them back, so don't be short-sighted
Mr. Kues, did you push the question?
Yes, sir, just a follow-up question.
Okay. Was, I don't think there was any other debate anyway, so we will move the question. All right, we are on Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the Deer Run Boardwalk and Trail ETF, previously established, recommended by the selectmen, recommended by the Budget Committee nine to one, and a majority vote is required. All those in favor, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. That passes. Moving on to Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to establish a library capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA thirty-five colon one for the future capital projects, including but not limited to repairs, renovations, and major equipment purchases, and to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the library trustees as agents to expend from said fund, recommended by the selectmen, recommended by the Budget Committee seven to two, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on this? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article sixteen? Ms. Banks?
Again, this raises our taxes. The con on this thing is that it locks in funds that we could be used for other priorities. This is just one more thing that is tying up money that we have to pay for.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Question, I just want to know, is the library a town building? Does town maintain? So why do we need to add an account?
Mr. Sawyer? Do you want to respond?
No.
Okay. There you go. Mr. Smith, would you like to respond?
Yes, it's a town-owned building, but it's managed and controlled by the library trustees. They have full autonomy in expending their budget and managing that building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyler?
Yeah, I'm a library trustee. Part of the reason for this fund is for planning ahead, so that you don't get a bill in the future when something major happens. We already have situations where the basement floods, and this year we had the expense of having that cleaned and everything removed and things like that. So this fund will help in the future to stop that from happening. Otherwise, you're going to get a bill still, but in the future, and it hasn't been planned for, so it can be a much smaller payment each year than having it all covered once in one year.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this article? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article sixteen passes. Moving on to Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing voting machines. This is recommended by the selectmen, recommended by the Budget Committee eight to two, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article seventeen? Yes, Ms. Banks?
Again, it's raising our taxes. The con is that some may distrust electronic voting, and there's ongoing mandates. There's nothing wrong with what we have now that we have to spend seven thousand dollars to get that. We're not New York, this is Osiphe.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm just wondering if these machines would help us vote tonight together.
I, it's, it's an interesting question, but we had a question about it yesterday as well. So you notice that when we vote for the town warrant articles, they are on the ballot and they therefore go through the machine. So essentially, you're voting on things like this at the election. That is because a number of years ago, the district voted to become what is called an SB two town, which is a Senate bill that passed a number of years ago, in which they took the voting away from these bodies and put it on the ballot so that it could be voted on at election. If, I mean, I'm getting old here, I know, but maybe some of you remember when we used to have to go over to Kingswood and we would spend a Saturday there, and we would listen to the discussion and debate, and then we would vote on each of those individual warrant articles. And so we were, we were doing something very similar to this on a larger scale. And so at the time, when we voted for the district, we also voted and voted it down as a town to become an as a town to become an SB2 town. So that's why we consider this tradition, which is very unique to the area in which we live. However, there would be a way to change that, and that would change this, and we would no longer have a traditional town meeting. We would have like what Conway has or what Wolfboro has, and they have a deliberative session where they discuss the warrant articles. They can amend the warrant articles, but they don't vote on the warrant articles until the actual election day. So that is why we don't have a ballot for these warrants. And so even if we go to a secret ballot, it is still a hand count, it is still the evening of. So no long answer to if we get new voting machines, they don't work tonight. Yes, ma'am?
Jeannie Millroy, it's like, what's wrong with our voting machines? They seem to work fine.
Yeah, I'll let Kelly talk to you about that.
So actually, the voting machines are going to be obsolete. We had, last night, we put it to sleep. The state is requiring us to get new ones. In the process, we have to raise 7,000, but the state is offering us 3,500. So I have to raise it in order to get the 35 to offset.
Thank you. Mr. Postel?
About Postel, I am one of the many people that work at these elections, and close up, you should hear those old machines grinding. They're struggling, and they're obsolete for a reason, as well as what was just announced by our clerk, that they are just plain illegal to use after last night. They're done. And I wanna point out that I agree, we are not a New York city. If we were in New York City, we'd be buying hundreds of thousands, probably millions of dollars' worth of voting equipment. We're talking seven grand here, it's a bargain.
Thank you. Ms. Banks?
Excuse me?
No, no, Ms. Banks, I'm calling you.
Oh, I have to talk to you.
Out of order. If you have a question about this, but we will not...
I have a question. I will have a question. If the voting machine was sorely bad yesterday, how do we know the ballots are true?
I think that's a great question, and I take issue with Mr. Postel's comment. I take issue with many of Mr. Postel's comments, and you just got to me before, you just got to him before I did. So I was there, I was present from start to finish, as was Ms. Keahan, and absolutely there was no issue. We went through all the ballots, the school has the same voting machine, they went through their ballots. I have absolutely no question about the legitimacy of yesterday's vote. Mr. Postel, you have done enough. Is there any other discussion? Because I think it's a legitimate discussion, I'm not saying that, and I won't silence most of you, but I will, Mr. Postel. All right, it doesn't look like there's any other debate, so all those in favor of Article 17, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. I appreciate that. Article 17. Articles 16, 17, or 15, 16, 17? Yes, thank you. There's a motion to not reconsider Articles 15, 16, or 17. Is there a second? Yes. All those in favor of not reconsidering? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Dallas. All right, now on to Article 18 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $600,000 for the purpose of paving. This is recommended by the selectmen, it is recommended by the budget committee, 7 to 3, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article 18? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All right. Mr. Northrup?
For my previous discussion, I'd like to amend this article to reduce the amount to $300,000.
Thank you. Can you please put that in writing for me? There is a motion on the floor to amend the $600,000 budget down to $300,000. Is there a second on that amendment? Thank you. So is there any discussion on the amendment? Yes, Mr. Fishbein?
Ash Fishbein, Ospey. Before we make that happen, can we just hear what the $600,000 is? What it's worth?
So, nothing to do with the police department. I was going to recommend the selectmen put this on the warrant because you guys are not getting the bang for your buck at $300,000. It's just like, when you go out and you put 3/4 of an inch over the top of a road that's not fixed from the bottom up, it's like getting Mercedes-Benz and putting wooden spoke wheels on it. It's not gonna work. Or building a brand-new house on a foundation that's cracked. It's not, you need to start from the bottom and come up. Historically in this town, that 3/4 inch is gone on the top, and it looks great to everybody for the first summer, but after that, it doesn't. And I was, when I started, I wanted to make sure that we got the best deal when we hired someone. At $300,000 with Ospey running from Lady Corner down to Granite, all the way to Bench Road up in the Ospey Mountains, that's a half-hour drive for anyone here. This town is big. We have the most town roads in the state. With $300,000, I'm not getting competitive bids. Places like Continental Paving, which you've seen them pave on state roads, they can lay a lot of hot top and they can lay it fast, so can't pipe. I can't get bids from them because it's not enough. It's like when you go buy one roll of paper towels and it's $8, but you can buy 40 at Costco for 30. It's very hard for Neil and his crew to get the ditches ready for pavement when culvert pipes have tripled. I have an email here from Allstate Materials from Charlie Emerson. "In 2016, the town of Ospey was paying $66 a ton to lay hot top, and $395 for liquid price. We were at $300,000." We are being asked, Neil and I, and it's gut-wrenching, when they ask us to use $300,000, and we're at $104.50 a ton, and $662 for liquid. It's very hard for me to just pave one year a road that's a half a mile long. I only could pay cover bridge and nut road one year because that was $300,000. We did 'em right, we had 'em all ground up, and we fixed the base, and then we went in and fixed catch basins, and we had 'em fixed. Lake Hill was one year. We're never gonna catch up with the amount of roads we have. And I know it's a lot of money, but in the town, your biggest asset is your road infrastructure. Nothing works without it. You have no police department, no fire department, they can't go anywhere. And the cost that the town is paying now also on salt, if you drive Newman Drew Road or Doors Corner Road or Old Route 28, when that plow doesn't sit straight on the road, it's leaving a bunch of material back, and you've just gotta put the salt to it to melt it out. We can't effectively plow the roads, we broke plows because they hook in, and it's just, Neil and his crew and myself, it's hard to get ahead with $300,000. And if anyone wants to see that, I can provide that later, what we get back for bids.
Mr. Howard?
Madam Moderator, can I direct your question, or direct her? What roads are targeted for this year that some of that $600,000 is gonna go towards?
So Carroll County, the county down there is doing a new water line on Old Route 28 that goes by the old state shed. We have worked with them through a long process, Neil and I have been to many meetings, that we feel it's better that while they do that, we repave that after, so we don't have to strip the pavement down the center and all these cross joints and every service, because that's where you hook in. So we're gonna grind that six inches, and then put a two-inch base, yeah, two-inch base and a one-inch overlay. That'll give you three inches of pavement. And your base will be 3/4 inch top, and your top will be 3/8 level. Then the next one we were looking at driving around is Doors Corner, and we wanted to give everyone a 10-year plan, but with $300,000, you kinda have to use it to what needs to be fixed. I hated doing what we had to do in Granite, because we had to pave down there just because it got washed out. So Doors Corner is one, Door Street is one, Newman Drew is definitely one. These are all ones that I'm just off the top of my head. The $600,000, Old Route 28's first, and probably Newman Drew Road, because it's getting harder to plow it.
Yeah, I just wanna thank the town for being proactive with our road system. You don't have to go very far in some of these neighboring towns, and you drive their secondary roads, and they've got real issues. And they're gonna have issues if they don't get proactive about upgrading their culverts and everything else with the intensity of these storm events, they're gonna lose their entire road systems.
Thank you. And to bring it back to the topic at hand, we are on the amendment as a reduction of $300,000. So TJ, can you share what would be cut from your priority list with the $300,000?
The only road we would pave is Old Route 28. I talked to Charlie yesterday, and that's the only road we'd be able to pave. And then everything else would be cut.
Thank you. Ms. Keegan?
Yeah, I'd like just some clarification on what this reduction was meant to be. I think when he first brought it up, he said something about the sale of the police department, using that to fill this gap. Is that where we're at? So it's not like we're just cutting it and there won't be money, it'll just, I thought the thought was that that sale would fill it.
So I will welcome Mr. Northrup up if he wants to speak specifically to the intent of his amendment.
Yes, I attended the meeting where the new police department discussion was held, and the selectmen told us that if they could not sell the old police department building, they'd take the money from the paving account to buy the new police department building. We had not, of course, sold that old building, and I don't wanna see us allocate funds that we don't have. You know, there's a price to pay for making that fine sky assessment that we'd sell that building. And so as much as I'd like to pave roads because I use them too, you know, this is just adding to our taxes as previously been mentioned many times. When we sell that, the old police department building, we can choose to spend that money on paving if that's where we'll put it, but I don't wanna allocate it tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, can you address the revenue and how that works?
Yes, thank you for the question. So when you sell town property, i.e. the police department building, which I announced earlier in a meeting with the purchase and sales agreement, that comes in as revenue. You can't just reallocate those funds towards an expense. So that money, it's figured into our revenue stream currently within this operating budget that will reduce the taxation, the amount to be raised by taxation. That is in the revenue stream already. You can't just redirect that revenue towards something else. But it is accounted for in the operating budget. And I just, can I hit on one? So I wanna give some historical relevance for how much money we have been raising for paving going back to 2015. And you know we've had enormous inflation over the last 10 years, and this is gonna prove the point that going to $600,000 has been a long time coming. So back in 2015, we raised $350,000. Back in 2016, we raised $250,000. 2017, $300,000. 2018, $350,000. And every year since 2019, it's been $300,000. Inflation's killing us. Paving has doubled in price, sometimes two and a half times, as you heard, TJ. If we don't appropriate additional funds, we are gonna get behind, the roads are gonna suffer, we're gonna get a lot of potholes, tire damage, and people will be complaining. This is an investment in the future.
Yes, sir.
Kyle Copeland, Senator Ospey, just wanna point out what one of our neighbors is dealing with right now. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I've heard in local news that Effingham was looking at doing a long-term bond specifically for paving, because they have put it off year after year, and now they're at the point where the roads are so bad that they can't raise enough money from taxes in one year, and they're looking at an option of borrowing over $1 million in a bond of paying interest on that. And because the numbers somehow didn't work out with the calculations I thought they come up with, they tabled it for this year. So now that problem's just gonna be pushed to next year even further. So I just want us to think about that. We've seen it in a very neighboring town by not taking care of it and planning ahead. That's what you might encounter.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
So I was at the police station meeting that we had, and I remember it like it was yesterday, Jonathan Smith telling us that he was gonna take the $300,000 from the highway fund and use it to buy the police station, and then when the police station, the old police station sold, the $300,000 would go right back into the highway fund. So that was a lie. So now...
Are you asking for clarification?
I'm asking for clarification on that, but also, if we have $300,000 that can just be stolen from the highway fund to buy a police station, how come, if we really needed it, we were able to just take it and buy a police station when we really should have been paving the roads, because that's what the money was there for? So how are we able to do that?
Okay, so let's just...
And I'd like to hear from TJ.
Let's, moving forward, just make sure we're refraining from judgments and accusations and asking questions that we would like answers to. Let's first hear from TJ and then from Mr. Smith.
We were approached by, no, New Hampshire Co-op, there it was, about the building, and I worked with the board of selectmen and the police chief, and at that time, we had those extreme, the washouts there, and through, I believe John can answer her, Matt, through town attorney, we could move those funds over, and that money that when we sell that police department will go back into the unassigned fund balance, and then where we're at a comfortable spot will be unassigned fund balance, and all that money over that will go back toward taxation. But if you took the police department out next year, I'm gonna recommend $600,000. So take that, from here on out, I'm going to recommend it because I don't feel I'm doing anyone in this room justice, when I'm getting bids from small paving companies that can't reclaim the road or pave at the pace that the other people can. So I'm going to recommend that. If you don't want it, that's fine, you guys are the people that choose, but I don't want the town of Ospey to get in a situation like Mr. Copeland said about Effingham, and if you don't believe me, just drive Pine Hill Road, and you'll see.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So yes, that was said regarding the sale of the police station, it occurred last year. It didn't occur last year, it occurred this year. No one has a crystal ball at the time, we were hoping to sell it last year, but bottom line is that was your asset, the taxpayers own it, and it's coming back to you. We had a purchase and sales, hoping to close the first week of April. That's gonna be coming back to you, it's that simple. And TJ is 100% correct, I just gave you historical data, paving was going up, take the police station, frankly, shouldn't even be part of this discussion, the paving needs to go up. The data supports it. I went back 10 years, inflation has killed us over the last 10 years. You either can invest in your roads, or you're gonna have potholes. And that's really what it comes down, that's gonna be your choice to make that decision.
Yes, TJ.
There's one person up that's sitting up here with me that can vouch for this, because he was right out in front of his house watching it. There's a few in the audience, but I know this guy's got a microphone, but Mr. Rokes down there, when we went by his house, we replaced all culverts, we raised the road where it needed to be rose, we put crown back in the road, and we put a three-inch base and a two-inch top, and he wouldn't mind speaking a little bit about that, he's been pretty vocal to me about it, so.
Mr. Rokes?
Oh, TJ's exactly right. I don't know how many of you people know how to build roads, but the one thing the town of Ospey has is somebody could really build a road. And $600,000 doesn't get you a lot anymore. He's absolutely right, about halfway up Lake Hill, totally washed out, it's been good ever since they fixed it. Redid the culverts, everything else, it's done right, so you don't have to do it again. And as the other gentleman said, if you don't take care of them now, it's gonna cost you a whole hell lot more later in interest.
I really truly believe TJ's done a great job, and the paving needed to be done, we're a year behind on that. So we were down having any work done, so now we have to make up for that. The prices that you quoted, that's going up 45%, so, I mean, quickly with my math, would be $150,000 over $300,000 to get started at $450,000 to get that work that was completed last year, and then the following year, of course, the price is gonna go up, and then be going up to $600,000.
Okay, so the amendment on the floor, though, is a reduction of $300,000. So we don't make amendments to amendments, so we need to finish one before making another. Joe?
I agree with the selectmen and TJ, we do need to raise this budget, this paving budget. $300,000, it just isn't cutting out. We do need to raise it to the $600,000. But, and I'm always have a but, we had $300,000 last year for paving that we did put into the police station. The money goes back in, when the building is sold, goes back into the general fund, which is your unreserved fund balance. This year, they're using 300. By the figures I saw at the ledger meeting, we are receiving, you are receiving $300,000 from the unreserved fund balance to be used to reduce taxation. Okay? That fund balance is built up from surplus at the end of the years off these budgets, back taxes and interest being paid, that money is what goes into the unreserved fund balance. So... So this 300,000 from the sale of, from the police station is just paying your money coming in from your unreserved fund balance this year. And not putting back the money that was taken and used for a police station when it was supposed to go for paving, and we voted on for paving. So my feeling was during this process that we should reduce the amount to be raised by taxation by taking 300,000 to pay for the 600,000 article from the unreserved fund balance. And we voted it down. But that would be the way to get that money that was, last year was appropriated for paving, that paid for paving. And not just going in to the unreserved fund balance to build it up more and more each year to be used someplace else.
So again, another budget committee member is suggesting something that could be another amendment. Again, I would like to deal with the amendment on the floor. If anybody has anything to discuss relative specifically to reduction of 300,000, that's what we can discuss. And then if we want to do a different amendment, we can do that. But we need to deal with this one first. Ms. Lang, is this in reference to this amendment? Okay.
People are complaining about the price of eggs. We all know about inflation. I'm totally opposed to this amendment.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this amendment? All right. Ms. Banks, where you going?
I'm going to push my tone for a moment.
I bet you're going to have a chance to say something else. All right. So all those in favor of the reduction of this 600,000 amount down to 300,000? If you are in favor of that reduction, raise your placards. If you are opposed, raise your placards. Thank you. This amendment fails. We will now move back into Article 18. As it stands, it's 600,000. We will have discussion on that. If there are any other amendment motions, please put it in writing, and then we will take it as they come.
Call the question?
All right. So there's a call to the, call the question. And so this is how this works. A motion to call the question is not debatable. That means, because I've recognized it, we need to vote on it. It requires a two-thirds majority. If we do a two-thirds majority, we just vote on Article 18 as it stands without any further discussion or motions to amend. We can revisit it if there is no vote to not reconsider later. But I just want to let everybody know what you're voting for. So a call to question is an immediate end of debate, and we come to a vote on 18 at 600,000. All those in favor of calling the question, raise your placards. All those opposed? Okay. So that passed by a two-thirds majority. So now we will come to an immediate vote on Article 18 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 600,000 for the purpose of paving, recommended by the selectmen, recommended by the budget committee, seven to three. All those in favor, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 18. There is a motion to not, and a second? All those in favor of not reconsidering Article 18? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. So Article 18 passes unamended. So there has been a motion to take a five-minute break. Is there a second? There is a second. I, we will vote because this is a school night for me. So I get it. All those in favor of taking a break, raise your placards. All those opposed? Thank you. So we will not take a break. We will move on to Article 19 to see, guys. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 60,000 to be added to the government buildings ETF previously established, recommended by the selectmen, recommended by the budget committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article 19? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Harley Wilson, Senator Ospey. Just a general budget question. I apologize. I was an English major. We're, we pass the budget. We hear about our taxes, taxes being increased. We also hear a reference to a general fund. So again, my English math, all those articles is 1.86 million and change. This generic general fund that we can pull from, there's bound to be a point that it hits the taxes. And I tend to go with the committees. So, I mean, they know more about all these issues than I do. If the selectmen say, "Free to nothing, we want to do this," in the back of their mind, they must have that number. My question to the budget committee and where the selectmen is, at the 1.86 million and change, if we approve all this, what are we talking for an increase? 0.5%? 11%? I mean, give me a number.
Okay. So I will entertain this question and this answer to determine how the bottom line will impact our taxes. And then we will move right back into the topic on the floor, which is Article 19. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If you turn to the first page of the town warrant in the bottom right, that's the projected overall budget increase of 2.66% based on revenue projections and based on what's appropriated. So that...
Page 102.
Page 102.
I get that. What is in this generic fund?
So there, we'll, we'll do a quick clarification about unassigned fund balance. But then we need to be on the topic, so.
Correct. So the unassigned fund balance, we gave back 500,000 last year to the taxpayers. And we're anticipating giving back another 500,000 this year. And that will be determined when we set the tax bills come November, December. It's based on revenues. If our revenues are up, we can use less. If revenues are down, we can use a little more. It's a balancing act. The whole point of the fund balance is to stabilize the tax rate. And we've done it outside of the reval year, the town portion, we only control the town, not the school. We've done a good job in balancing that over the last four years.
So if we approve all these, are we still balanced?
So I think this is, this is off-topic. I, I think it's a great question. And I would love to have this discussion at some point. So perhaps the selectmen can work on doing some kind of informational piece about exactly how those things work. Because I think this comes up year after year, and people want to understand how it works. It just unfortunately, this isn't the venue. And so let's work on making that happen.
I can just say, add one thing?
Yep.
We have talked about it in several meetings, the Honorable Ed Camo, who, government oversight, who by the way, volunteers his time for free to videotape us, which I'm grateful for. He does an incredible job. He analyzes the data. You probably can go in somewhere on his site and search keyword "fund balance," you'll find where we do talk about it. But I will meet with you gladly, privately, and have a great conversation. I will share with you the hard data.
Thank you. It is, it's an odd thing. And coming from a school, knowing how like when a kid loses a textbook and their parents get charged for the textbook, I don't get that money to then go buy a new textbook. It goes into this general fund. And so it's, it doesn't logically make sense, but it's just how it works. So it's a great question. All right. Back, yes?
I just want to say, statement question. The budget committee meetings are public, and you're welcome to come to them when we're all meeting. And a lot of these questions can be answered. So it would be great to have people come and hear and ask questions then, too.
Thank you. All right. Back to Article 19 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 60,000 to be added to the government buildings ETF previously established. It's already been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 19? Ms. Banks?
I did so much work on these warrant articles. And I will tell you, from 15 to 33 are they. They leave the door open for potential over expenditures. And they all will raise our taxes, 15 through 33. So I couldn't get up here for every single one. But I'm telling you, people, please stop voting on these articles. They're all going to raise your taxes. And there's no, there's no law that says that they can't overspend it. So I don't know what everybody's voting for. If you like paying taxes, then hey. But when is enough enough?
Thank you. I just, I, I want to make clear that I think we're all under the impression here that all the money that we are voting to raise and appropriate will in fact raise taxes. And the percentage is in there. But it is this voting body's choice whether or not to vote these in. So you can vote yes, you can vote no. But I just, I want to keep it right there. You know, we're, we're not making judgment calls on how other people are voting or what the town ultimately decides. This is why we do this. It is up to you, the voters of Ospey. We are a community, and we decide one way or the other. Yes, Madam Moderator. Gloria Valari, Senator Ospey.
I would just like to reiterate the obvious here that when we look at the budget committee, when we look at the selectmen, the people that represent us here, we are so blessed to have these able-bodied people that have come forward and spent hours and hours of their time and beyond their time to look at all these issues and to let us know how they're voting. And I would hope that that would weigh in on how we vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on Article 19? We don't need to call the question if there's no other debate. So Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 60,000 to be added to the government buildings ETF previously established. All those in favor, raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 19 passes. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 57,000 to make the annual greater payment. This is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article 20? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Barron?
I just got a question out of, so Jonathan or TJ. It says annual payment. How many of these payments we've got left?
Okay. TJ?
This is our last one. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Jonathan just stole TJ's thunder.
Yeah, he did. Well, he did.
Sorry, TJ. Hey TJ, you already picked that.
Yeah, John, same here, all right. So it's the last one, and I do want to tell the town because the, a town ordering us just bought the same exact greater for 330,000. We got it for 280,000. And I spread those payments out over five years so that it's not such a hit on the town because that is our most expensive piece of equipment.
It sure is. I know that. I just hear that it said annual payment. I don't know what we got.
Last one.
The warranty runs seven years. So we're going to go outside the payments two more years with warranty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 20? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 21, to see if the highway, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 250,000 to be added to the highway equipment CRF previously established, recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article 21? Yes, and a second? Thank you. TJ?
I'll just clarify before anyone asks a question, and then they can if I don't. The 250,000, I submitted a 10-year plan back five years ago, what we're going to do with equipment. And this is the year that we are at the 10-wheeler. Every single year, I've tried to put 200,000 in. And what I do is switch up a three-to-five dump truck to a, to a one-ton the next year so that when we buy the one-ton with 200,000, we have like 80 or 90 left over. And then the next year, I asked for them, for you guys to vote on 200 again. So it's like your car payment. It doesn't change. I don't want to have you guys go up and down and up and down because that's hard to budget for. So this one is the year that goes up to 250,000 because the 50,000 is for the 10-wheeler. And the reason the town is a 10-wheeler is because Granite is so far from our salt shed. If you can't carry the capacity of salt, he's going to have to make two runs. That will put Granite at a four-and-a-half-hour turnaround to be plowed, and that's not good for the school buses. So that's why we have the 10-wheeler down there.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 21? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 21 passes.
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
Two things. I'd like to not reconsider the last three.
Okay. There's a motion to not reconsider, 19, 20, and 21. And a second? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. So we will not reconsider anything prior to Article 21 or 26.
Secondly, thank you, Madam Moderator, a point of information. Something just didn't sit with me when I heard someone speak. And it was about the wording on these warrants. And just for clarification purposes, because actually I'd like to know. I understand that on a ballot, we have state laws that require us to write things in certain legalese. I know that petition warrant articles can then also be written in a certain way. Because they're a petition warrant article, they can be written differently. Is that, which, which way does that follow this? Because one thing that I'm hearing repeatedly is that there's like some underhanded thing going on where you guys are trying to pull wool over our eyes and we can't, can't read these right. I want clarification on that because I know the answer. But I think people need to hear that. And I just, if you don't mind, take it a second just to understand, are we, are there softer ways to write these so we can explain it ahead of time?
So I will direct that to Mr. Decker. Is there a way to have kind of a description of or, or a layman's terms of these warrant articles, or do they have to be written as they are?
Excuse me. First time I've had to talk all night. For some warrant articles, the state law will prescribe specific wording. For most of the articles that are in your warrant tonight, there are no magic words required so long as the purpose is clearly stated. I have, in, in my view, looking at these warrant articles all the time as a professional, these do appear to be stated quite plainly already. And, and, and so I wouldn't recommend further changes which would potentially muddy the water. But certainly, that's something that can be reviewed with the select board at the time they are working and drafting the warrant articles.
Mr. Decker, I'm going to clarify because we voted on a number of articles yesterday on our ballot that were much less clear. Thank you. And so could you include those in your statement as well?
Sure. So zoning amendment articles are of a type where the state law specifically prescribes the language that is supposed to be followed. It's RSA 675:3, I believe, where it states you have to write, "Are you in favor of adoption of amendment number such and such?" And then describe exactly what that amendment is or provide a summary of what it is. And zoning amendments can be notoriously difficult to understand if you don't have the context of the whole zoning ordinance with you at the time you're reviewing it, which is why the law requires that information on zoning amendments be placed on file at the town office so that if interested voters review the ballot in advance and have questions about it, there's a resource to understand exactly what you're voting on with respect to the zoning amendments.
Thank you. And I will say that that was posted. We had multiple copies in the back yesterday. Ms. Jones?
I was just going to ask the clarification. I think that on the website, unless it is somewhere else, maybe we could just describe these things a little bit more. It may not be able to be on the ballot in a different way, but like a paragraph describing it versus just the sentence.
And that's what we have posted. So again, this is a procedure-type thing like the unfunded or unassigned fund balance. So I would like to get back on track and move to Article 22 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 100,000 to be added to the bridge repair replacement expendable trust fund previously established. It is recommended both by the selectmen and the budget committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article 22? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 22? Ms. Banks?
This will increase town expenditures for the year and increase our taxes.
Correct.
Is it needed? I don't think so.
Is there anyone who would like to speak to that? Anybody from the budget committee or the town selectmen who all voted in favor of this? Okay. Well... Okay, we'll start with Mr. Goss, and then we'll go to TJ.
This money is put aside to repair, bridge, pit to repair, or replace bridges in the town. I'm not sure without asking TJ, but I believe we do not have any red-listed bridges at this time. Well, we have two. He said we have two. Okay? These bridges have got to be repaired. Repair bridges is extremely, extremely expensive. So we, so we don't have to raise it all in one year. We put money aside each and every year to be used to repair bridges without coming in and asking for a million dollars in one shot to pay for a bridge. This way here, it's spread out over a period of time. We save, we aren't saving any money, but we're reducing the pain of an up-and-down tax bill by putting the money aside. This is a very much needed thing. These red-listed bridges are stuff that we have to repair or close them. No choice.
Thank you. TJ?
So just trying to echo what he said, is that five years ago, there's a lot of familiar faces in here, and they all asked, "What are you going to do to prepare for when we need to repair bridges or when the roads need to be prepared?" Well, these ETFs are what the board, Matt and I, come up with, so that we are putting some away, just like you do at your own home. And Joe is 100% right. When it says "bridge," it's like boat. It's expensive. Anything to do with a bridge is expensive. And $100,000 would not put the guardrail system on one of the bridges that's red-listed. So we have to prepare for that, and we need to get ready to spend that big amount, so we're not getting bombed, like you talked about before. I would rather have it and fix the bridge ourselves.
Thank you. Ms. Banks?
What two bridges need to be repaired, and how long have you been building this $100,000? How many years have you been building, and what's in that fund?
Thank you. TJ, do you want to start?
So there's one up on Oscepe Mountain Road, where it connects the Pine Hill Road, and that is one, and the other one is on Newman's Route Road. And as far as $100,000, this is the first year to $100,000. Before, it was $20,000, and it was either 20,000 or 25,000. And with all the increased costs, it's not going to help us doing it to 25,000. We're never going to get to that point. So, but we had no red-listed bridges at that time, but we do now, so it's getting a little bit more urgent, and that's why I think you should go to $100,000, and hopefully then when we get to that point, it will take a lot of that cost away from the town.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. So the current balance in the bridge repair ETF is $126,000. This is a sheet of all the trust funds where your money's held for these types of occurrences. It's a public document. The trustee of trust fund manages it. They're elected individuals. If you ever want to review it, reach out to the trustee of trust fund. It has $126,000 currently.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on Article 22? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 22 passes. Moving on to Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be added to the benefit pay ETF previously established. This is recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 23? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 23 passes. Moving on to Article 24, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to be added to the police vehicle and equipment ETF previously established. Again, recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article 24? And a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 24? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 24 passes.
I'd like to move to not reconsider the last three.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor of not reconsidering Article 22, 23, and 24? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. We will not reconsider. Moving on to Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be added to the recreation ETF previously established, recommended by the selectmen, recommended by the Budget Committee 9 to 1, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 25? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 25 passes. We've already done Article 26. We will move on to Article 27, to see if the town will vote to establish a technology expendable trust fund per RSA 31:19A for the future upgrades, including but not limited to network devices and computers, and to raise and appropriate $20,000 to put in the fund, with this amount to come from taxation. Further, to name the board of selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. This is recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article 27? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 27? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 27 passes. Moving on to Article 28, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 to be added to the revaluation CRF previously established. This is recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article 28? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 28? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 28 passes. Moving on to Article 29, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be added to the property cleanup expendable trust fund previously established, recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Motion? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 29? Yes. Head to the microphone.
Dean Milroy, I just would like to understand what this cleanup entails.
Absolutely. Yes, Mr. Smithler?
Thank you for the question. So I spoke with this early on regarding the legal line in zoning and building enforcement. So through that process, we have dangerous properties, junk yards, hazardous properties, that this property, that this town takes enforcement action through the courts to clean up. That money that we expend to clean up gets either billed to the property, we seize the property through a sheriff's sale, or it gets placed as a lien. That's part of that $270,000 that I spoke to earlier, that does come back to the town. Not necessarily immediately, but either when the property's sold, or if the owner chooses to pay it, it will be immediate.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on Article 29? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article... There's a motion to not reconsider any of the articles that we have done in the past few minutes. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. We will not reconsider anything, Article 29 or before. Moving on to Article 30, to see if the town will vote to establish a rail trail expendable trust fund per RSA 31:19A for the creation and maintenance of a recreational rail trail, and to use and appropriate $25,000, to raise and appropriate $25,000 to put in the fund, with this amount to come from taxation. Further, to name the selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. This is recommended by the selectmen, recommended by the Budget Committee 9 to 1, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article 30? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 30? Yes, sir. When you get to the microphone.
Always. Good evening. John Whalen, West Oscepe. First time I've spoken at this meeting in my 45 years here. Thanks for listening to me, first off. My perspective on this, it seems like we've got the cart a little bit in front of the horse. And I have two questions. First, there's a parallel rail trail proposal just a few miles over the hill. That comes out at $645,000 per mile. And this trail here is quite a few miles, and I'll get into that. So it's, it's a relatively large investment. My understanding is that the investment will come through grant money and potentially some tax dollars. My question is, do we have a sense for what the ultimate cost for this is going to be? How many million dollars? Number one, it's almost, from my calculations, it's almost as big as a budget for the town. Secondly, if you look at what you model as being the taxation piece, how much is that for a family of four?
Thank you. Budget Committee or Selectmen?
I'm Mr. Fisher Elliott.
Okay. Mr. Elliott, then.
I'm another friends, I'm co-chair of the Friends of the Oscepe Rail Trail Fund. And Mr. Whalen was obviously looking at me for answers to that. Before I respond to him, and I will, two weeks from now, the governor will be signing a bill. And what that bill will mean is that 21 miles from the Conway Branch, from Route 28 all the way up to North Conway, will be transferred from the Department of Transportation to the Department of Conservation and National Resources Trails Bureau. That, this area has been an abandoned rail trail. The last train that came through there was in 1962. There was a study done in 2004, what would it cost to, you know, repair all the rails, get all the beams, the trestles? It was $20 million. You can imagine what the cost would be now. In the fall, through our assistance of our local state representatives and state senators, there was a House committee meeting, which people attended and expressed their opinions. The Senate had a similar thing. It directed the Department of Transportation, which had sat on this, master planned for about six years. And our representatives finally urged them, "Come up with a master plan. What are you going to do with this stretch of rail?" A committee was formed. There were two meetings, right here at the Freight House, and a meeting in Conway. And the decision was, as I've said before, to transfer the 21 miles from the Department of Transportation to the Department of Trails. As I handed out this sheet, I'm not going to go read it over. I think you can all read all the advantages and the things that we've talked about here. This is a fantastic recreational and economic opportunity for this town. And all the things that I'm involved with in this town, whether it's Constitution Park, the rail trail, and also the Secretary, the Economic Development Council, we are all striving to do one thing. And that is bring businesses and economic development into this town. You can go throughout the country, the last 40 years, there have been 2,400 rail trails, over 200,000 miles of rail trails that have been developed. The impact on the communities that have adopted them has been fantastic. It has brought commercial life back into those areas. This is going to happen in phases. The first phase will start here in Moltenville Road and go 2.7 miles up to Route 16. There are going to be other phases going along. We also have a business enterprise called Joy Rides, which wants to come on with electric rail bikes and go from Moltenville Road down through 28. We have somebody who's very much interested. He spoke at the various meetings. So the total cost, if we were to do the entire 21 miles, is about $6.5 million. However, all we're asking for you on this, and I've been a fundraiser for various organizations for over 30 years, when I go ask for money from foundations, from companies, from individuals, the first question they ask me, "Well, what's the skin of the game? What's the commitment of the town?" And not that we're going to get a grant or a donation, but that's the first, they want to know that we're involved. So we are asking, yes, we're asking for $25,000 to allow us to go, and we've already, we've already gone and made a presentation to one foundation, one planning board. And that was the question they asked. And we said, "Well, we're coming up here to a town meeting. We're interested in doing that." It is our intent, and I'm not going to say no, never say no, I will never say no, but it is our intent, as it says in the statement here, "By supporting Article 30, we can open the doors to secure more funding through grants, private donations, and fundraising activities without burdening our tax dollars." It is not our intent to come back every year and ask you for money. But our intent is, we've got to get started. And these other foundations and groups need to know that we are in this game. So that is our goal. I'm happy to answer any other questions about it. And there we go.
Do you have a follow-up?
I do. I do. Thank you. I appreciate all the work you've done. It's been a lot. $6.5 million. The intent is to not raise any portion of that as taxes. So I modeled that, okay? It's $6.5 million. Let's say you get no grants, that's a $5,733 tax bill per family of four. If you get no grants, now I expect you'll get grants, but based on precedent, what is, what's the reasonable expectation?
So I think I said, we're going to work on a phase one. I will probably not be alive when these 21 miles are finally done. It's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take a group, if you think about the North Conway group, it took them 10 years to do three miles. It's going to take us a long time, but we've got to get started. And if any of you have ever had the opportunity to walk the rail trail from Moltenville Road up to 27, it's a beautiful section. I think it would do wonders for our town. One of the things that we have tried to work on in the Economic Development Council is, we continually do that, is to support our businesses. But we've come to a conclusion. We need to get people here, and then the businesses will come. And I believe that a rail trail is the ticket to do that. The comment has come up to me, "Well, what happens if down the road, the railroad wants to come back? What if they want to come back and reclaim this?" I mentioned there were 2,400 rail trails, over 200,000 miles of trail, in the last 40 years throughout the country. Not one trail, not one mile has ever been reclaimed by the railers. And frankly, if we do take the rails up, and our cost of taking the rail up, and don't quote me on this, because it's a little fuzzy, I fully admit it, but we heard from Northeast Aggregates, who's one of our consultants, it's about $75,000 a mile to pull the rails up, but you get $25,000 back in salvage. Okay? So let me finish, please. And so, let's say we rip them up and the trains come back. We've done the train group, it's a big service. It's called circular engineering. Okay? So, slow, mature, that's our goal, but we feel like we have to get started.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify that the only decision that this body can make is the $25,000 for this year. We cannot anticipate or vote for anything other than that moving forward. I understand big-picture questions at the start of a project, but there's no commitment beyond us here tonight, because it would be the governing body in future years that would make that determination. Ms. Gaggen?
I just wanted to state that this project has been in the works for a very long time. The Economic Development Council did a study in like 2019 on this rail trail that some of the people in this community were a part of. And same as I said before, if the town doesn't put any skin in the game, then there won't be any grants in the future, so having the town vote on this and put some money into the pot will help it for future.
Thank you. Mr. Fishbein?
Just a clarification. I heard 21 miles are all, and $6 million. Is 21 miles in the town of Oscepe?
Mr. Elliott?
No, thank you very much, and I was just asked that question. Other towns will also, Madison is involved with this, Conway would be involved with this. Oscepe is not responsible for the entire 21 miles. So thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Laura Wydell, of the Oscepe. And I'd like to speak on behalf of the long-term goals and this warrant for the rail trail. I grew up in New York State, in the Hudson Valley region, and lived south of the Adirondacks for years. And it broke my heart to see all the little towns that I had grown up with just fall into ruin and devastation through lack of commerce along the Mohawk River. And also along the Mohawk River is the famous Erie Canal. And when, New York State put in a huge long-term goal to convert the old Erie Canal into a rail trail that runs from Buffalo, New York, all the way to Albany, 400 miles to Albany. And they did it over, I couldn't tell you how many years, probably 20 years. And then the last couple summers, my sisters and I have ridden this trail, all 400 miles of it, in supportive events throughout New York State. And over the years, we've been able to watch these towns come to life again. And at these supportive events that were coming through with hundreds of cyclists coming through these little towns, the entire town come out to meet the cyclists. It brings money to their restaurants, their ice cream stands, vendors out selling things. It is expensive, but it draws people. And I will be back again to ride the rail trails in New York because we don't have any here. So that's what I, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you state your, I didn't get your name.
Laura Wydell.
Thank you.
I'd like to move the question.
There is a motion to call the question. There is still debate up for grabs, so we have to come to an immediate vote on calling the question. I need a two-thirds majority to end debate. So all those in favor of moving the question, raise your placards. All those opposed? Thank you. That is a two-thirds majority, so we will move to vote on Article 30 to see if the town will vote to establish a rail trail expendable trust fund for RSA 31:19A for the creation and maintenance of a recreational rail trail and to raise and appropriate $25,000 to put in the fund, with this amount to come from taxation. Further to name the Selectmen as agents to expend from said fund, recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee 91, a majority vote is required. All those in favor, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 30 passes. Moving on to Article 31, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $48,000 for the additional wage and benefits cost of adding a full-time Assistant Recreation Director. This is not recommended by the Selectmen. It is not recommended by the Budget Committee 4 to 5, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion on Article 31? Thank you. Is there a second? Yeah, thank you. This has been requested to be done as a secret ballot, so once we have done our debate, we will vote by secret ballot on this article. Is there any discussion on Article 31? Yes, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So you may see that this warrant was not recommended by the Board of Selectmen or the Budget Committee. And then you may question, why is it even on the warrant? This is the reason. The only reason why we as a body voted against it is purely for the monetary factor. We fully support Justin. He does an incredible job. Izzy, his part-time assistant, is another incredible worker. She's, they're both assets to this town. So the feeling of the Board of Selectmen was to let the body decide. Let you people decide if you're willing to take on another full-time position through the tax base. And that is the only reason why it's on the warrant as it stated. So if you want to improve the rec program, you want to support Justin and Izzy, vote for it. If you're concerned about taxes, vote against it. It's really that's it. Thank you.
Before I recognize anyone else, I just want to make clear that our purview is only the dollar amount, not a particular person or a particular person in a position. So this is about the rec department and choosing to add a full-time position. It should have nothing to do with who would be filling that position. Mr. Chapey.
Thank you, Justin Chapey, Rec Director. I grew up here. I participated in the rec programs. I worked for Peter as a camp counselor. I went to school here. In 2020, after COVID hit, the department, the Rec Director parted away. The department had shut down for about six months. I took the job as a part-time position in September of 2020. Just to kind of give you, let me give you some numbers, and then I'll explain what you would be getting out of this extra position. So we have a software rec desk that counts all the registrations when people sign up for any of our programs. We can kind of keep track of who does what. It helps us see what programs are working, what aren't. In 2019, which is the last year before myself and Izzy, not long after, started, this number doesn't include Day Camp, just doesn't, and it doesn't include things that we don't take registrations for, like Breakfast with Santa, things like that, the special events. So in 2019, there were 221 program registrations and 29 programs offered at the Rec Department. Just tallying up what we did this past year, we had 1,228 registrants and 73 programs offered. Again, that doesn't include Day Camp and a lot of the other special events we do. It is almost a 500% increase in participation over the last five years. Much of that is thanks to the support of TJ, to the Selectmen, to the community for coming up to our things, supporting us. TJ and his crew do a lot of the maintenance stuff that I think, probably Peter can tell you, he used to be out on the mower, mowing the softball fields and things like that. I do not have to do that, and it allows me to focus on the programming. And I'm extremely grateful for that. As proud as I am of those numbers that I just said, there are areas that I'm aware we are lacking and that I think the community wants and has reached out to me and said. We focus a lot of our programming on elementary school kids because that's kind of, we talk about bang for your buck. That's kind of where the bang for the buck is, right? The elementary school kids are right across the street. Their parents want a break for a couple hours. They're like, we'll drop them off at Rec for soccer or something. What we don't have is a lot of things for our teens. We have now done five years, and these kids have come through our programs. And then they get to middle school, and we don't have a lot for them. We try to offer as much as we can, but the reality is we don't have enough time in a day or resources to do that. We also, with this position, would increase our preschool age kids. Homeschooling is as popular as it's ever been right now. There's a large group of people that, those hours where we don't have a lot going on, typically during the day, the nine to three, when a lot of kids are at school. We have people who are in school or homeschool. They're looking for places to go. Additionally, things like summer concerts. I know we used to have those at the gazebo. We would love to bring those back, either at the gazebo or Constitution Park. Do more family-friendly events. We did a movie night a couple of years ago that was super popular. We'd love to bring that back. All that kind of stuff. I just want to say, thank you regardless of how this goes. The community has supported this department wholeheartedly my whole time here. My job as the Rec Director, I feel, is to tell you what I think this town needs and is asking for. And it's your job to decide if you feel that that's worthy of going forward. I appreciate all of you for being here, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Fishbein.
Yeah, Ash Fishbein of Ospey. I think, I just want to say thank you so much to Justin and what he's done. One of the best investments this town has made is in him. I think Peter, if he's here, and I would be very proud of the work he's done. Peter was here for decades. I hope, and this town needs to hope, that Justin is too. I run operations with folks that I have seen run very, very thin. It hurts morale. It tires people out. Services fade. Things get weird and end up refilling in those positions. And it's very costly. So I just want to share my support of this because I personally firsthand witnessed Justin and Izzy running all over the place. Not sure what, who's, you know, they know what they're doing, but we're like, "Look at him, he's over there, he's over there," you know, running around. And I think it's very important to note that he is definitely running thin. And this is a great investment in our community. So full-fledged support from me. I hope you all will have a say.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Duane Cook, Senator Ospey. I agree with Mr. Fishbein and what Justin had said as well. Just seeing both Justin and whoever he has with him, whether it's Izzy or somebody else, running all over the place is nothing short of amazing. I can barely handle my four-year-old at home, so to see them handle everybody is pretty incredible. To go from a part-time position into a full-time position is roughly an extra 10 to 15 hours a week, which would increase the amount of different recreational opportunities within this town, whether it's for our kids, whether it's for our teens, whether it's for all of us in here as an adult. The opportunity to be able to get out and do something that's not just sitting at home and watching TV all the time like I do myself is nothing short of a great opportunity for this town. And I would really hope that everybody kind of helps support that. One program could have one person show up, but that one person's going to get a lot out of it with Justin and whoever he has as a full-time position.
Thank you. Ms. Fernandez.
Teresa Fernandez of Ospey. I just wanted to say I'm in support of Justin and Izzy. I think they're amazing. We moved here from Massachusetts during COVID, and summer camp was the first camp that we sent our girls to. So in Massachusetts, it costs over $400 a week to send your kid to YMCA. That's to do some art and crafts and swim in the pool. When we came here and signed them up for Ospey Reg, our full-time cost was $75 a week per child. And they go on water parks and day parks and storing land. And I thought to myself, this is crazy. So we have to pay extra for tickets? Like, what's the extra cost? And they said, "Nothing." So with their hard work and dedication, like, they, they work hard to get the funding, to get the programs. This is amazing for our children. I think that it's totally underestimated. And adding on another full-time position will just increase those programs immensely. And I think that's truly what our kids need.
Ms. Jones.
I agree that our kids need it. I just wanted to clarify, is this in addition to the part-time? Or is it in to replace it?
It appears that Justin is shaking his head no to make the part-time full-time, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Peter Wall of West Ospey. Tonight reminds me I'm getting old. 30 years ago this June, I took the job as a Rec Director. I did that for 21 years. And I think Justin was 12. Yeah. For all but four of those 21 years, it was me, myself, and I. And most days, we get along pretty well. I had a full-time assistant for four years, and it was the greatest thing since sliced bread. We were able to offer so many more programs and so many more activities. I got a little bit of a break from six, seven days a week. But that went away. He was here from 2006 to 2010. But the work that Justin and his staff does is great. It's awesome. It's great to see, and it's great to see the support that I received from all of you 30 years ago this June when I was here. It was a time of my life that I will never, ever forget. And I obviously am for this article to make that position full-time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White.
When I look at something on the Budget Committee, I want to give you the best value for your dollar. By doing this for an article, you're going to get great value for your dollar. There is not much better than you could do by putting in your kids, and they do a great job.
So there is a motion to call the question. So all those in favor of calling the question, please raise your placards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. That passes by a two-thirds majority. Again, this is a secret ballot. This is our first secret ballot of the night. So if you would turn your placards behind the placards, you have a sheet like this. Because it is our first vote by secret ballot, we will use the yes one and the no one. So if you are a yes vote, you will put in the yes one. If you are a no vote, you will put in a no with the number 1. That's imperative because it is the first vote. So you just pair off and you pick which one. And as the ballot clerks come around, you put in the vote that you choose. Just as those of you who are here with me when I open the polls on Election Day, we show that the ballot boxes are empty. So if my ballot clerks could please all hold up their ballot boxes, show that they are empty. Thank you. And then we'll each come around and collect your votes. I'm going to rent the bathroom, so don't get around me. All right. If we could bring the body back to order, we have our final tally for Article 31. We have 113 yes votes and 21 no votes, so Article 31. Yes. There is a motion to not reconsider. All those in favor, all those opposed. Okay. Yeah, for either of those, right. All right, moving on to Article 32. All right, guys, we're getting back in. To see if the town would vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,000 for the purpose of hiring a consultant for the master plan. This is recommended by the selectmen, recommended by the Budget Committee, eight to one, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. All right. Any discussion on Article 32? Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So this is at the request of the Planning Board. They are responsible to update and complete the master plan on a timely fashion. They are looking to hire a professional who's very experienced in this process, and that's what this money is allocated for. The master plan must be updated by state law.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Lynn Clark of Oscebee. I had a question about the master plan. I know that the last one was done, I believe, 2008. And I was just curious when, if that is getting done, the 30, was it 30,000, 20,000, that they were proposing in the article?
18,000.
Oh, sorry, 18,000. If any of that can be done in-house with different groups?
Okay. Mr. Smith? Okay. Mr. Fishbein, Chair of the Planning Board?
Just for a moment, I give my time to Mr. Behrens. Maybe I can answer that question as well, if there is one.
Okay. So maybe Mr. Behrens has a question, too, and you'll answer both?
I don't actually have a question. I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
I was on the Planning Board 20 years. We've tried, I don't know how many times, to do this stuff. It's a little bit above the pay grade, even for a paid, so to speak. And it's very complicated. I guess I was 20 years, my second year off, I think. And we tried to get this done a lot of times. There's a lot of hours in it. Bruce Stewart has a lot of hours into it. They actually need help. This is a very necessary thing. Much as I hate to put it on the tax bill, it's never getting done without. And it's going to be done.
Thank you.
And that's my comment. And if Ash has anything on it, I yield down.
All right. Mr. Fishbein.
First off, thank you so much, Wright. I appreciate that. To answer some of the questions that are probably being asked into your minds is the master plan. Jonathan just touched on the legalities of it, and it is required by the state to have one. The last time it was done was 2006. That was the last time one was done. It's beautiful. It's amazing. It's a huge document. Problem is, it's outdated. The master plan is a tool that is used to decide what your ordinance is all. For many, many years, it has been the reverse. We have created a prohibitive, sorry, what is it, Jonathan?
Permissive.
Permissive, thank you. A permissive ordinance, which puts the rules in place that say, this is what you can do on your property. And without referencing the master plan. And it's created a lot of rules. We've tried to do a lot of housekeeping on our ordinances just because there's a lot of redundancy. But essentially, what this is, is this is how we decide what ordinances make the most sense to guide, to use as a guide for the plan. And this requires the entire body here. Ultimately, we've done the housing section, which cost a little bit of money last year. It's amazing. It took a ton of data. We, we tried. Sherry, Bruce, myself, other, other Planning Board members tried for hours, trying to just give the data that we needed to make this thing happen. And we couldn't do it. We all admitted it. It was bigger than us. So we hired a consultant. They came in and made it look easy. It was incredible. This could have been done years ago, to be quite honest with all of you. This should have been. And we were able to get the housing portion done. Now we have land use and a few other pieces that need, that we need to complete it. And my whole goal of joining this Planning Board five years ago, which blows my mind, is that, is to get this thing done. I was told in 2015, the master plan is in word paper, it's printed on. You can look in minutes at Selectmen's meeting to see that. And it's just unfortunate because you didn't, they didn't understand the tool this is to guide ordinances and rules that you all then must follow. If you have a plan and a vision for this town, i.e. a rail trail, a downtown business area, I've heard so many people say online, we need to save the downtown business area, please. The, this document is wildly important because it needs to be in writing. And then we designed the ordinances and laws around it to make sure that those things in the master plan are followed. Sorry for the long-winded explanation, but it's really important because no one has gotten us for over 20 years, almost 20 years. So I just want to make sure everybody has it now, it's on record. This is, this is a need. This is something that we need. And after five years of being on the board, I got one year left. I would really like to bring this thing home so that you all can vote on it at next year's town meeting. So I am wildly in favor of this, of course. I hope that you are all wildly excited, as I am. I can tell. So, yeah, I'll answer any other questions if they want to.
Thank you. Mr. Durant.
Mike Durant, as a newly-elected member of the Planning Board, I welcome $18,000 with professional help, you know? I'm going to need it, and I think this town needs it. I'm quite surprised it hasn't been done since 2006. I rise in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Lang.
Gordon Lang. As a property owner in Wolfboro also, I had the privilege to participate in their master plan planning. It was actually a lot of fun because of the way they organized it and the degree to which they reached out to the community to bring in all of us in the community to come in and look at the different aspects of, of the town. What are the things that we value? What do we have? And where do we want to go? And there are so many talents in this town, and so many of us have opinions and things that we know about our town. And we have a desire, we have our own personal stake in where we want to take the town, too. And it would take some professional master ceremonies to help set this up and to be able to, to bring what becomes kind of like a little circus together, where you have little pods where you're actually thinking and planning and weighing in on these things together in one central place. It could be this room. And I would welcome having that kind of professional guidance to so we could have that same wonderful experience here in Valley Park Town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bruce Stewart of Oscebee. Thank you, Jonathan and Ash. I'll go ahead and just highlight on a few specifics, just to complement what they've already said. So in 2023, New Hampshire Housing authored a HOPS grant to go ahead and write for municipalities to be able to write their, their housing chapter in their master plan. When I started, when I wrote the grant and started looking for a consultant, I didn't want to find somebody from Exeter, or from Portsmouth, or Somersworth, or Dover, or North Conway. I wanted to find somebody that had more of a demographic, or lived in a demographic, such as Oscebee, so that they could appreciate the same values that we appreciate living here at Oscebee. The two individuals that I came up with were Ivy Dan and Carol Ogilvy. They're from the Keene area, or just outside of Keene and Walt Hall. I felt that met my needs, or our needs, as a planning board. We were able to apply for that New Hampshire housing grant. We got it. We, I think, were awarded a total of $21,500 to put toward that housing grant, the housing chapter rewrite. I think we spent a total of about $14,500 or $15,000. And I didn't really want to leave that on the table, the remaining balance. And I went to Carol, and I went to Ivy, along with a representative from New Hampshire Housing. And we were able to parlay that remaining money into rewriting an additional three chapters. So out of the 10 chapters that we have, we've written the population chapter, the housing, the land use, and our vision. The vision and the land use are both required pursuant to RSA 674:2. We've met that obligation. They gave me a price of approximately $16,000 to finish rewriting the remaining six chapters, that they felt confident that they could have it accomplished by October, and that we got to have it ready before next, next year's voting. And I just wanted to go ahead and just acknowledge, and for the work that they've done, they did help us out quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 32? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 32 passes. Moving on to Article 33, to see if the town would vote to assist the elderly by reducing property taxes by 25% for anyone 72 years old or older for their permanent residence located in the town of Oscebee and determined to be their permanent residence by virtue of being a registered voter or any means the town administration should decide. This is submitted by petition. Is there a motion on Article 33? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. All right. I will invite our Town Council to speak to the petition warrant article. Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Miss Moderator. Because this is a petition warrant article, the Select Board is required to place it on the warrant in an unaltered form. If this had come to my office for review before, for review and editing, I would have given the advice that this article is illegal and unenforceable. Unfortunately, state law in RSA 72 controls property taxes. The top line of the law, RSA 72.6, is that all real estate shall be taxed except as otherwise provided in RSA 72. RSA 72 also already has a structure for elderly exemptions. That's in RSA 72:39-B, which, excuse me, sets forth conditions for how elderly exemptions can be granted based on age, 65, 75, 85, based on the value of the property, how much the exemption can be. Unfortunately, this article doesn't do any of that. It just states that anyone over the age of 72 would be granted a 25% exemption. That's not permissible, and it's inconsistent with the state law in RSA 72. So I can't tell the voters how to vote on any article. So you can vote yes if you want, but if you did, I think it would be illegal and unenforceable. So my recommendation would be that you vote no on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. In light of that, is there any other discussion on Article 33? Yes, Ms. Doyle.
I understand totally it's illegal. And so I went online, I'm 70, so I went online to see about what the application would be. And I did some research on it through the town of Oscebee. And there is a state, you know, state law with the amount that you can make as a single or married. There's all kinds of regulations. Well, the town of Oscebee voted and had a vote, like here, and voted in 2004. Well, it's been 21 years since then, and there's a difference between the amounts. It hasn't been changed. So it's sad that this warrant article, you know, the research wasn't there. But I think that a good idea would be to at least upgrade to the present date and time and be, even if it's only the amount that the state is recommending, and we're not even, not even asking for more, just to bring it up to 2024 and 2025. So that would, my question would be, that means that we would just have to ask again a different petition warrant article like for next year?
Correct.
My recommendation would be that the Select Board could be asked to review whether it's appropriate, whether they would agree to place an, a legally correct article to update the exemptions in accordance with the law. Otherwise, that could be, an option is to repetition it at next year's town meeting, following the correct format in 7239-A and B.
Ms. Lang, can I make a motion to table this?
It would have the same effect as voting it down.
Okay. Thanks.
So, once we table it and adjourn, then it's, it's gone.
Mr. Emery.
I just want to make sure I understood it correctly. Did he just say that the selectman could actually make the exemption meet the state requirement?
The, the selectman could put an article on next year's warrant that, and I don't know the details of what your exemption currently is, but I'm assuming, I heard the statement that it hasn't been updated in a while. So if it would be possible to update, that's something that the Select Board could look at doing and putting an article on the warrant for next year's meeting.
Well, so you're saying they actually still have to put it up to a warrant article? They couldn't just do it on their own?
That's right. It requires a town meeting vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Booth.
Edwina Booth, Center of Oscebee. Can you just clarify, does the town have an exemption, an elderly exemption now? Can you explain what that might be so that we are informed?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, we currently do. There's an application process, but there are income limitations and asset limitations within that. So you have to qualify at those numbers. Those numbers can be changed through the warrant process. But this warrant article, as the town attorney said, doesn't do that. This one's not actionable. If you want to change those numbers, you'd have to do it at a town meeting next year through the warrant process.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Sorry, I just had a quick question. Why couldn't we have done it before? Like, why couldn't we have gone through the lawyer so we could have had it looked at before town meeting, so we don't have to go again next year?
Well, okay. Mr. Smith?
This came in through petition. It wasn't a Selectment warrant article. It was a petition warrant article.
And as Mr. Decker stated, therefore, it needs to be placed on the warrant as written.
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of Article 33, raise your placards? All those opposed? Thank you. Article 33 fails. Moving on to Article 34, shall the town adopt a policy requiring the separation of conflicting paid or volunteer positions within town government to eliminate conflicts of interest submitted by petition? Is there a motion on Article 34? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Again, I will open this up first to Mr. Decker to discuss the petition warrant article.
So if this article were to be passed, it would be, at best, advisory only. It would not be legally binding because it calls for actions that the legislative body, the town meeting, doesn't have control over. There's already a state law, RSA 69:7, concerning incompatibility of offices, which defines when a single person cannot hold any, any two of a certain offices. So, for example, it says that no person shall at the same time hold the office of selectman, treasurer, moderator, trustee of the trust funds, collector of taxes. treasurer, moderator, trustee of the trust funds, collector of taxes, auditor, highway agent, and so on from there. With respect to other town employees, the select board is the executive. They control your town employees, and they are in charge of setting a policy for who can hold what roles, and what is appropriate or not. So again, I would recommend that this article not be adopted, because it's not enforceable, and it's also vague. It doesn't provide the select board any particular guidance as to what kind of conflicts of interest the voters would be looking to have avoided.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on Article 34? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article 34 fails. Moving on to Article 35, shall the town vote to hold all selectmen's meetings at 6:00 P.M. in order to accommodate more citizens? Submitted by petition. Is there a motion? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. And again, I will open it up to Mr. Decker.
So once again, this would be at best advisory only. If the voters were to adopt this, the select board could take it under consideration that the voters would like the select board to meet at 6:00, but the select board is not bound to do that. The select board can set its own meeting schedule, so long as it abides with the right to know law in terms of posting 24 hours' advance notice, is the usual requirement for when they're gonna have their meetings.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 35? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 35 fails. Article 36, shall the town recognize Osceby Mountain Artisans as the new organization responsible for continuing the mission and initiatives of the former Osceby Revitalization Group, DBA Osceby Main Street Program? Submitted by petition. Is there a motion on Article 36? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Again, I will open this up to Mr. Decker.
So for the last time, oh, before, again, I'm afraid this is illegal and unenforceable. It's just generally too vague. The word "recognize" doesn't have any legal meaning or effect with respect to the select board or other town boards. So it's too impossibly vague to have any legal binding effect, and therefore, I'd recommend it be voted down.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 36? All those in... Oh, sorry. No, go ahead.
Adriana Brown from Osceby. I'm wondering, when people are submitting petitions, is it possible for them to work with somebody, so that it could be worded in a way that would be actionable? Like, it seems like they're putting things through that, and we're going through all this, and it's not even legal.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So it's a good question, but these come in through petition, they're submitted to us. As the town attorney said, they have to be drafted to the warrant as they're submitted. The language in the petition has to be exactly in the law. We can't deviate from that. And there also has to be a law that comes from the legislature, authorizing the authority to implement that warrant article as presented. If there's no law authorizing it, as the town attorney said, it's not actionable.
So do people who present the petition, do they know that beforehand? Does somebody contact them and say, you know, the wording of this isn't gonna work?
So...
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
So when these come, I've addressed these warrant articles in at least three meetings over the past two months, rehashing that, these are not legal warrant articles, non-actionable, etc., for all the reasons I just stated. So it is addressed, but again, by law, required to put them on the warrant.
So, okay, Mr. Decker.
And just wanted to add that for articles that are close and seek to achieve a legal purpose, they can be fixed at town meeting, because they can be amended by the voters from the floor. So if there's some technical defect, then the select board or the town council can recommend what the amendment has to be from the floor at town meeting to fix the defect and make it legal and enforceable. These are not the type that can be fixed, unfortunately.
Thank you. Mr. Fishman.
Just judging by the last three, I'm assuming they weren't looking for consultation of our selectman.
We cannot speak to anyone else's intent, but read what you will. Is there any other discussion on Article 36? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article 36 fails.
Should we reconsider the last four?
There's a motion to not reconsider anything prior to Article 36. And a second, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. I will now take a motion to adjourn. And a second, all those in favor? Thank you. We are now adjourned.
What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm not just randomly saying he's gonna do a video. So what I sent him to do, he introduced him.
Is this for other town residents, or...?
It's for the Facebook town. There's people on Facebook from the town that want...
Almost, thank you.
They kind of interest no way, like, yesterday, they could have done that some T-Voo for some things, and today, they can't. And it's because it's a different type of warrant article or something?
Yeah. So I can explain that, some of the... And the moderator touched on it with respect to that, the SB2. You know, you might not want to plant ideas in people's heads about the potential to change, to change the format, that can...
I think this is a discussion, this isn't a question that answers it yet. No. Oh, okay, sorry. So if you want to just explain who you are, and then if you, explain what the question was like, how they had about why we have two different things.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah. So my name is Matthew Decker. I'm with the law firm Drummond Woodson, and my firm represents the town of Osceby. So I'm in attendance here at the business session of the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. And the question was, why do the voters vote on certain warrant articles on the voting day using an official ballot and voting booths, and why do they have to come to the business session to vote on other warrant articles? And the answer is because there's different state laws concerning all the different types of articles that you're voting on. So a traditional, very pure democracy, original New England town meeting, everything happens in a room at the town hall in a business session, including election of officers, election of the select board. There are still some towns in New Hampshire that do that. One step up from that is towns can adopt an official ballot system. Osceby is one of those towns that at some point in its history has adopted the official ballot. That means officers get elected by receiving a ballot, checking the box next to the person you're voting for, and, you know, dropping it in the voting box. And that happens on a separate day, the second Tuesday in March. And then the business session, the rest of the warrant articles, are bifurcated from that, and those are still done in a big group meeting with the moderator leading the vote. State law, individual state laws the legislature can pass that define when some issue has to go onto the official ballot versus has to be dealt with at the business session. So for example, all zoning amendments have to go on the official ballot if the town has adopted an official ballot. That's in RSA 675, which concerns the amendment of zoning ordinances, the adoption or amendment of zoning ordinances. The other one you had to vote on yesterday was to go from a three-person select board to a five-person select board. That, again, is a specific state law in RSA 40, RSA 40:4-D or -B, that specifies that a vote to go from three to five goes on the official ballot and doesn't happen at the business session. Something else, like a bond article, it's in RSA 33 that talks about bond articles, where the town is gonna borrow money. And that statute specifies that that has to be done by a ballot vote at the business session, and the ballot box has to remain open for an hour for that voting to occur. So it's really a collection and potpourri of all the state laws that come together to really form and define what gets voted on day one at the ballot box versus what gets voted on at the business session.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Great. No, honestly, it's one of these things where people think there's shady business going on. You know, they're like, oh, they put this on this night, so these people couldn't vote on it, stuff like that. And it's like, I'm pretty sure that's not what it is.
The big thing that people get at is, and the moderator spoke about this, is the SB2, where you still have a business session, but the business session is just to finalize what goes on the ballot. And then the whole warrant that, you know, Articles 1 through 36 that we've been looking at across two days, goes on an official ballot, and then people can vote on that. So it's like a trade-off, because when you put all 36 articles on an official ballot, a lot more people can show up and vote for it. Because then they don't have to be at the meeting at 6:30 P.M. They can vote in the morning or vote in the evening. So that potentially helps more people vote, but you get less participation in the sausage-making in terms of what you amend the article to be. And when people show up to vote on it, they no longer have the option to amend it. So it's a trade-off. And I, the general feedback I've heard is that a lot of towns that adopt the SB2 official ballot, it's hard to come back to what Osceby has, and people regret it. But opinions on that vary from town to town.
Thank you very much for taking the time.
Sure, glad to do it.
Much appreciated.
Yeah.